All right, I'm calling to order a meeting of the Stevens Point Area School District's School Board, Monday, January 12th, 2015, 6:30 PM. Roll call and verification of a quorum, please.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Evil.
Here.
Ms. Ehrler.
Here.
Ms. Vaxton.
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Here.
Mr. Presley.
Excused.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Shirk.
Here.
Ms. Totten.
Here.
We have eight members present and a quorum.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. And does anyone have anything they wanted to shift around, ask about? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Move for approval.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just have one. I thought it might be helpful if we took Policy 185 and Policy 811.4, not together, but, you know, maybe back-to-back because they have similarities between them. So we can either do the 600 series first and then do the other two last, or we could do the other two first and the 600 series last.
Any objections?
So you're saying, like, move C, switch C and B?
Yes.
Okay, so we do A, C, B then?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I need a motion, please.
I'm going to approve the agenda with the changes that were just outlined to 9F2.
One second.
One second.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Eight to zero, motion carries.
All right, we have students from Madison Elementary School coming to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(audience clapping) 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 (audience clapping)
So we have students from Madison Elementary, and this evening we have Isaiah Christensen, Brooklyn Brown, Suresh Keef. Suresh here?
Nope.
Nope. Taslima Keef. Taslima's here. Isaac Yakush. And Caleb's not here either. So let's give it up for our Madison Elementary. (applause) So as promised, first of all, we're going to have you turn those around and hold them up, like, there you go, and watch Mr. Vomowski, take a nice big photograph. There you go. Okay, so now we're going to have, start with you guys, we're going to have to introduce your parents.
My mom Liz is back there.
Welcome, Liz. Anybody else?
Nope, that's it.
My mom Teresa Christensen is back there.
Teresa, welcome. Anybody else? No? Okay.
My mom April Brown is back there.
April?
My mom Lori Martin Keef is back there.
Lori, okay, welcome. Thank you very much for what you do to support our kids. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming this evening, but we should also introduce your teacher and your principal. Who'd like to do that?
I'll introduce. (laughing) Well, first we have Mr. Martel as the captain, and then Mr. Banver, our principal.
Thank you very much, Grant and Carl, for what you do also. Thank you very much. Our board members would like to meet you individually. So, strong handshakes all the way around.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for leading us today.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks for being a cadet, too.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thanks for being a cadet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks very much for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, Ms. John.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
So this month, we have two community partners that we would like to recognize. And both of them have been incredibly supportive of our school district, and we would not have accomplished certain things in certain areas without these two partners being very, very strong and visible. So we'd like to first recognize the Suzuki Group, for lack of a better word. So Pat, Pat Dirkoli, representing, I think, UWSP and Suzuki.
Or Suzuki Center.
Exactly, the Suzuki Center. So Pat, come on up.
Hi.
And I'm going to give the plaque, which you will receive in a moment, from Ms. Vaxton. So there are a number of things that the Suzuki Center has done in conjunction with the district over the years. It's a longstanding partnership, and one that has grown as our programs have grown. So I just want to read a few of these things, and not to embarrass you, but... Each year, the Abbeaux Suzuki Center, in collaboration with the district and the district's elementary string teachers, volunteer time to prepare students for the Central Wisconsin Middle School Honors Orchestra Festival. This allows our sixth-grade students to participate and to attend for free, learn three orchestra pieces, rehearse at UWSP, and perform two selections, along with our junior high and high school students. This gives our sixth-grade students also an opportunity to know what is possible if they continue to pursue orchestra through their junior and senior high schools, and inform his parents about Suzuki instruction. The center has also been active in the development of the Central Wisconsin Youth Symphony Orchestra Program under the direction of the district's instructor Kurt Van Teen. Together, they've provided a high-quality symphony orchestra opportunity for our committed kids at the junior high and high school. Over the years, the center has also, by invitation of the district and the district's teachers, served as guest clinicians in orchestra and general music classes, which has been an invaluable help to our kids. And there's also been a shared respect for the collaborative relationship between the center and the district in working for our very best students to develop their music reading, participate in ensemble, and develop student leadership skills within those ensembles. So for those reasons, we want to recognize the Suzuki Center as part of our district partnership. So congratulations, Pat.
Thank you very much.
And Angel has a...
(applause)
Well, and I just would like to say, I accept this on behalf of our faculty at the Abbeaux Suzuki Center, who are very committed and wonderful faculty and teachers in our program. And to say that the support and the collaborative relationship goes both ways. With the district, they help us as much as we help them. So you've supported us over the years with our, holding our festival concert here each April, and allow us to put up our posters when we have open houses and things like that. So we really appreciate your support over the years. And the opportunity, most of all, the most important one, is that our students have an orchestra to play in. And not every district has a string program, and so we're very fortunate to be able to have that for our students that attend Stevens Point Schools. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. And we're going to have you hold that, so we can get a picture. There you go. Wonderful. And then our board members would like to meet you.
Thank you.
My daughter's got several years' career in the military, so probably supportive. Yeah, thank you so much for all you do. The kids just benefit so much from us. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
What a pleasure to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a lot of relatives that...
Yes, I know. You're a real help to share.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thanks, and congratulations.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Our second partner this evening that we'd like to recognize is Mid State Technical College. So Steve Smith, representing Mid State, is here. Steve, would you come forward? A different role than a board meeting you're normally supposed to attend.
(laughing)
So the three educational, major educational institutions in the community, UWSP, Mid State, and the district, have always enjoyed a relationship. In the last few years, we've tried to strengthen those and raise those to the level of providing opportunities for kids, and also then making the jobs at the Mid State and UWSP a little bit easier. So there are a number of things that I'd like to community to know about this particular partnership, and then give Steve an opportunity to say a few words himself. So Mid State partners with the district to offer Spash students dual high school and collegiate credit through transcripted credit and advanced standing courses such as EMT Paramedic, Certified Nursing Assistant, and IT Networking and Program Specialist, to name just a few. During the 1314 school year through this partnership, we saved Spash students almost $200,000. Mid State Technical College faculty serve as leaders on committees such as the Spash Comprehensive Counseling Advisory Board, the Suicide Prevention and Mental Awareness Coalition for Portage County, and have had a direct positive impact on the district's students as a result. Mid State also works with the district to bridge the gap for students from high school to technical college through programs such as the Transfer Learning Community. Spash students are invited to attend college preview days at Mid State, giving them the opportunity to explore the campus and different programs, and MSTC picks up the cost of busing and lunch for those students who attend, which is wildly generous, because we know how much those kids get. Mid State and the district also partnered in building the foundation for our youth apprenticeship program, the Career PEP Grant, and have also partnered with the Technology and Engineering Department in the Wisconsin Fast Forward Grant that they recently received. Finally, Mid State advocates for the district's students, and they work collaboratively with our staff and our families in order to prepare them to be college and career-ready. And it's for these reasons that we want to say thank you, Steve, to you, Sue, Dick Rosalvin, and others, the faculty, for providing the opportunities that you do for our kids. And Angel has a plaque that she'd like to...
I'm going to read this, and obviously, also to the Suzuki. "In recognition of the significant and profound contributions to the district for advancing the education of all its students, and for helping us to fulfill our mission, prepare each student to be successful, thank you so much."
(applause) Well, I accept this on behalf of the faculty and staff of Mid State Technical College. I think we're in this business together, that being the training of the workforce and the citizens of our greater central Wisconsin. So I thank you for the recognition. However we can work together, I think it's in the benefit of all of us. Thank you. Sorry, I said a couple of things. Didn't tell Sue that you were really here.
(laughing)
(inaudible). Thanks so much, Steve.
Good luck.
Thank you so much for being our partner.
Okay. Thank you. So we have two other recognitions this evening. One is for a group of students, so we'd like to have members of the district's FFA to come forward, and I think Ione is here. So Ione, you want to come forward with them? There are two of you.
Yep, there's two of us.
Wonderful. So we're going to, I have a number of certificates, so in a minute, I'm going to ask you to introduce yourselves and your wonderful sponsors. I think I'm a repeat performer the most often, so that's awesome. So the Stevens Point chapter of the FFA traveled to Louisville, Kentucky, for the National FFA Convention held October 28th through the 31st, and brought home several national awards. Among the 60,000-plus FFA members from across the United States, 11 Stevens Point members attended the national convention in business sessions, career shows, and award ceremonies. Participants from the district were grades nine through 12, and we were recognized in the area of National Chapter Award, which compiles the chapters in the areas of student chapter and community development. It was through an extensive application process and various levels of judging that our group advanced to the national competition. Sadie Kalojie, chapter FFA president, along with Laura Lee Zimbauer, crossed the national FFA stage to be awarded a three-star gold rating, the highest rating offered by the FFA. And our kids excelled in each of the three divisions, earning the highest possible ratings. So what we want to do is recognize you and your colleagues, along with Ione, for that success. So McKenzie?
Yep.
Okay, there we go. So McKenzie is receiving a certificate of recognition for her participation in the National FFA Convention, and so there it is, and I'll put that Janet Hancock in a minute. Allison?
No, Natasha.
Natasha. And I'll give the rest of these to Ione.
Yeah.
Okay, Natasha, there's yours. And Mrs. Vaxton there would certainly like to congratulate you as well. There you go. All right, so why don't you tell us what it is that you did to earn the awards that you did?
So in National Chapter, what we did is we try to be active in the community and serve our communities in many different ways, including other students by doing Food for America programs to teach kids about how farming works and what comes from the farm. And we try to be as active as we can in our school and in the community to get this award.
Anything?
Just to teach kids that food just doesn't come from a grocery store and actually where food comes from.
The application is based upon three different areas: student, chapter, and community development.
The student development is building our students, building our leadership skills, our career skills. Chapter development is taking our whole school, our whole school community, and try to educate them about what FFA and agriculture education is all about. As they said, it's not cows and salads and plows anymore. And lastly, community development is to educate the community about the diverse industry of agriculture, the diverse aspects of FFA organizing. So those three areas are then judged, and there were 40 schools in the nation that received one of these, so it's pretty prestigious, and there are over 8,000 FFA chapters in the nation. So 40 schools got the award.
Give it up for our FFA. (applause) And did you folks come, did you guys come alone, or did you come with your parents? You did, why don't you introduce?
My mom's Brenda Betro in the back.
Brenda? There you go.
My dad is Dave Rotz in the back.
Dave, welcome. Thank you very much for what you do to support the kids in the program. That's awesome. Okay, so the board members would like to meet you personally, and I'm going to take these two, give them right back to you, and then I'm going to take these, Ione, and I'll send them back to you, because it's missing a signature. They'll go right in.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, somewhere this one year.
Thank you for all the...
Oh, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for all the hours you put into it. Thank you for all you've done. Congratulations. Good job. I think we have to practice. I know, but not full of it. Congratulations. I think once again... Great job. (laughing) I appreciate it. Congratulations. Don't stop. Thank you. Awesome. Congratulations. Thank you for all the work. Great job. They wanted to cut your position. I know. Great job. Great job, everything. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So our last recognition is a pretty special one, so we're going to ask Chloe and Betsy to come out forward. So we began this a little over a year ago. So we ask a student from a different, one of our different, a student from a different school each month to identify a teacher or a staff member, can be any staff member at all, and identify why that individual had an impact on his or her life. So we've had some great success with this, and our students have never let us down, and I know that Chloe is really prepared tonight. So it's pretty awesome. So we'll introduce Chloe from Roosevelt, and there's a few words to talk about Betsy Wyberg.
Hi, my name is Chloe Schneider. I'm a sixth grader at Roosevelt, and I'm looking forward to attending Ben Franklin in the fall. I want to thank the school board for having me here today, and also Mr. Greenwood for considering me to give this speech. Everyone wants to feel special, and therefore, everybody wants to feel appreciated by someone. That someone is a teacher who always makes me perceive appreciation. Mrs. Wyberg, who has been my fifth-grade teacher and as well as my sixth-grade teacher. She is one of my favorite teachers for various reasons, one of them being that she has never given up on any student that doesn't happen to understand or comprehend a concept that we are working on for school, no matter what the subject or how much time we have left to learn it. Mrs. Wyberg has always made everyone feel welcome and special right from the moment they walk through her classroom door. She's a teacher that not only teaches incredibly, but has a great sense of humor and doesn't, and actually lets her students have fun once in a while. Growing up, I saw teachers as just being there to educate you, but when I started fifth grade with Mrs. Wyberg, I realized the best teachers you will ever have are the ones that are more than just educators. They get to know you and are able to help with more personal issues. For example, recently, my friend and I were having disagreements. It was really upsetting me, and I didn't think it was going to get any better, when one morning before class, Mrs. Wyberg pulled the two of us aside and helped us work it out. She really cared enough to help us get through a tough time. I also remember when I was just at the beginning of fifth grade, I was amazed at how enjoyable class was with her as our new teacher. She thought of games and cool learning activities that we got to do that really made the subject easier to learn and more enjoyable. One of my favorite traits that Mrs. Wyberg displays is how outgoing she is. That is a big reason why we get along so well, as I have been told over the years that I enjoy talking a lot, like people, so much. But it is also a reason I enjoy having her as a teacher, as she always seems to understand my more outgoing personality. As a sixth-grade, as a sixth-grade, I'm sorry, as a sixth grader, not a teacher yet, I'm really looking forward to getting into middle school. I also appreciate that she allows her students to have a good balance of freedom, while still holding us accountable to great and respectful, to good and respectful behavior and getting our assigned tasks completed successfully. I feel we are treated with respect from Mrs. Wyberg as she talks to us like we are young adults. On a sad note, midway through last school year, in the awful cold, snowy, and icy weather, Mrs. Wyberg was severely injured and was unable to come back to school. When our class first received the news, we were all pained to hear that she wouldn't be back for a while. Every day, all the students would say multiple times, "I hope Mrs. Wyberg comes back soon." Sadly, she never was able to come back to teach us that year, but it was so cool when she made a surprise appearance at the district, at the district-wide fifth and sixth-grade track meet at the end of the year. I felt great knowing that she was one of the teachers cheering me on in all of my running events, so I can add a great cheerleader to the many things that I appreciate about her. You can imagine how excited I was then, when in the middle of last summer, we were notified that Mrs. Wyberg was going to be teaching, was going to be switching grades and would be teaching sixth grade. I was so overjoyed that I could barely get through the rest of the summer. She's worked really well with Mrs. Blacco and Mrs. Barron, two other amazing sixth-grade teachers, that I have enjoyed getting to know so much. Mrs. Wyberg has helped build my confidence a bunch. She's always said I could do something even if inside I wasn't so sure. I'm very grateful that I have an opportunity, I've had an opportunity this year to be in both advanced sixth and seventh grade math with Mrs. Wyberg as my teacher. Every step of the way, she believed that I could persevere and succeed. Because of her, I believe I'm doing better than I ever would have been doing in math or any other, other subject. If I or any of the other students don't happen to understand one of the lessons, she always finds a new and innovative way to explain it. Mrs. Wyberg has made such a big impact on my life, as she has been such a unique and gifted teacher who has helped me through so many different situations. She's smart, fun, bold, outgoing, and don't forget about those hip scarves she wore, just about every day. Most importantly, I think I'll look back years from now, hopefully graduating from college, with special memories of fifth and sixth grade because of Mrs. Wyberg. Oh, and most important, the best part, she's a Green Bay Agri fan, people. Thank you, Mrs. Wyberg, for being my teacher and so much more.
So before we... (applause) Normally, I would read this, but because you are so adept at public speaking, whatever that happened, boy, I'll tell you, that pulled it out. I'm going to have you read this to Mrs. Wyberg and give it to her yourself. Start with...
Stevens Point Area Public School District Student Staff Recon...
Recognition?
This certificate is awarded to Betsy Wyberg, sixth-grade teacher at Roosevelt Elementary School. The student staff recognition is presented to you for the positive and lasting impact you have made on me and my fellow students. We are a family of teachers and learners. You've taught me and many others the essentials of how to learn, the values of how to live a good life, and how I might, and how I might pay it forward. With heartfelt thanks and gratitude...
You. (laughing) Okay, so let's take the photograph first. And Betsy?
I'm speechless. But I'm one of many staff members at Roosevelt. I'm a little teared up. I had no idea she was going to say all that. But she's a very special student to me also, and special student to many other staff members, and so we are lucky to have you as a student at Roosevelt.
Can I introduce your parents, Chloe?
My mom is right there, Liz Schneider, and my dad is right there, Dad Schneider. No, Steve Schneider. And then also, my sister's here with Lizzy.
Where's she?
She is not here. Don't know where they are.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you both for raising such a wonderful student for us. Appreciate it. And the board would like to introduce you.
Amazing.
Thank you. You did an awesome job. You're a star. You'll be a star. She helped you get there.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you so much. Good job. Good job. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job. Thank you. Congratulations. You had a wonderful job. Thank you. Great job. Great job. Wonderful job. Thank you. Congratulations. I want to see that hip scarf, though.
Congratulations. Thank you. Donations? We also have some donations to report. The district received a donation of $1,000 from Polito's Pizza to be used in our special sports program. The Fernanda Center made a donation of $57 towards the district's Life Skill Center in memory of Agnes Gargalak. Michelle Como made a donation of $35 towards the district's Life Skill Center in memory of Agnes Gargalak as well. Kelly Young made a $50 donation. Greg Neen made a $50 donation. Spash Counseling Office made a $27 donation. The Spash Special Education Department made a donation of $150. The Spash Sunshine Activity Fund made a donation of $40. Mabel Volker made a donation of $100.[1467.75]
Thank you so much.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You had a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Great job. Great job. Yes. Wonderful job. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
I wanna see that hip scarf, though.
Congratulations. Thank you. Donations?
We also have some donations to report. The district received a donation of $1,000 from Polito's Pizza to be used in our special sports program. The Fernanda Center made a donation of $57 towards the district's Life Skill Center in memory of Agnes Gargalak. Michelle Como made a donation of $35 towards the district's Life Skill Center in memory of Agnes Gargalak as well. Kelly Young made a $50 donation. Greg Neen made a $50 donation. Spash Counseling Office made a $27 donation. The Spash Special Education Department made a donation of $150. The Spash Sunshine Activity Fund made a donation of $40. Mabel Volker made a donation of $100. Mr. and Mrs. Dave, and all of those donations were in memory of Agnes Gargalak, which is Jerry Gargalak's mother who recently passed away. Mr. and Mrs. Dave Grabsky made a donation of $350 to support the district's Science Department Technology Fund at PJ Jacobs. Kelly Rowe made a donation of $50 to the district's Science Department Technology Fund at PJ also. A $20 donation was received from Mr. Chung Zhang, and $35 from Mr. and Mrs. Tim Rollins, $30 from David and Cynthia McCabe. Alan Paul donated $20, and Mr. and Mrs. Aaron Schalfnebel, a donation of $15, and Mr. and Mrs. Ted Potter, a donation of $25. Mr. and Mrs. Andrew Cowling, a donation of $20. Mr. and Mrs. Dean Miller, a donation of $200. And Mr. and Mrs. James Keener, a donation of $20, all of which went to the Technology Fund at PJ Jacobs. We're very, very grateful for all of those donations, whether they were in memory of or donations to our programs.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the public comments section. We have six speakers. I'll just call you in order. First is Albert.
I like the new podium. In studying the agendas, I noted that the board has a number of items to take up that were postponed from previous agendas. Those items will have to be dealt with by the present board and/or the board as reconstituted after the spring election. I noted that at the September, or November, rather, 10th, 2014 board meeting, two rather comprehensive matters were postponed. They were addition of non-voting board member parent representative and consolidated task force direction. I don't think you've dealt with the non-voting board parent member. You do have the consolidated task force direction matter as item 7D tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Albert. Next on the list is Carl Banker.
My name is Carl Banker, 610 Pinecrest Drive in Plover, also the principal at Madison Elementary. I wanted to address item number 9E4, which is administrative contracts. It's on your agenda tonight. And I am addressing it as both a principal, parent of four students who are in the district, and as a community member. And I guess my concern with this is, just the message that the board is sending, I think unintentionally, but I think something that you need to consider, are those consequences of those discussions. There are perfectly legitimate reasons to have discussions about the administrator contracts. But I guess my concern has to do with the amount of time that's spent, kind of the, certain areas that you're focusing on, and the general tone of the discussions leave me concerned. Just a little bit over two years ago, the board spent a lot of time developing those contracts and refining them. And in a previous career as a certified public accountant, I have a fair amount of experience working with employment contracts. I can tell you, in my experience, our contracts are pretty basic contracts. There really isn't much to them, and there are a few benefits attached. Our benefits are, for the most part, just what's in the employee handbook. And quite frankly, it really befuddles me the amount of time and energy that's been spent on these really basic contracts. And I just worry that it deflects your time and attention from the issues that help to bring our students' achievement forward. And the purpose of these contracts is to recruit and retain the highest quality people that we can for leadership positions in our district. And when you entertain these discussions, and especially in the tone of which, you know, I was at most of those meetings, especially with that tone that some of those discussions occurred with, I think you place some concern in the mind of existing administrators and those people looking to maybe join our district. I think some of them might think twice, thinking, is this really a supportive board? And we are very fortunate here. We do have very high-quality leaders. I know my, my own kids are in three different buildings, and we have extremely high-quality people, and I don't have any concerns at all. I'm thrilled. But these leaders, these high-quality leaders that we have, they are in very short supply. I've been on a number of interview committees. It's really hard to find the quality of people that we have. It takes a lot of time. It takes a lot of energy, and we do a lot of screening to find these, the type of people that we have here. And when there's the appearance that the board doesn't want to work with administration or, or the appearance that you're looking to kind of slim down already basic contracts, it does cause anxiety within those here and those looking to come into our district. And I really look to, to the board and administration as being partners and moving forward. And I think when that, when it looks like maybe that isn't happening, it has potential to erode both your effectiveness and ours as administration. And I understand, you have an extremely difficult job, and I know it's a thankless job. Rarely does somebody get up here and say they appreciate all that you're doing. And I do. And this is an, you have a lot of hours of work and tough decisions that you need to make. This is an opportunity, I think, for the board and for administration to work together to put the, the needs of our kids first. After all, the, you know, the mission of our school district is to prepare each student to succeed. And I think in every decision that you make, and I know every decision that I make and all the administration, that's what we do. And so, I just ask you to keep that in mind, because with, with recruiting and retaining high-quality leadership, that's, that's paramount to what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish going forward. Without great leadership, it's impossible for us to achieve our mission and our goals. So, I appreciate taking a few minutes to listen to me this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Clover Schmidt.
Clover Schmidt. I am the principal and school psychologist at Kennedy Elementary, and I also am, would like to speak on item 9E4, administrative contracts. And to do that, I have, I guess, a couple of questions that I want to present. In the, the first two-year administrative contract period, the board developed goals regarding administrative contracts to attract and retain high-quality leaders, reflect appropriate compensation due to increased ratios of students and employees per administrator among comparable districts, and reflect appropriate compensation due to additional district-level duties not present in other districts. I first want to ask if those continue to be the goals and if we're still continuing to work towards that. I want to speak specifically to the first goal, to attract and retain high-quality leadership. Throughout my professional career, I have developed many relationships with other administrators and aspiring administrators throughout the state, both through membership in professional organizations, as well as through my graduate work through E.W. Madison's Educational Leadership and Policy Analysis Program. And I love this district. I love working for this district. And so, when we have administrator openings, I'm, I'm on the computer and I'm contacting people that I know, trying to elicit interest in having administrators apply to this district. And overwhelmingly, responses have not been positive, and mostly because of perceived administrator and board conflict. And that, that makes me sad, because I love what we do for kids here. I'm proud of the work that we do for kids here, and I'm proud of the work that I do for kids in this district. And I really hope that you consider that as we do look to continue to attract and retain quality leadership for this district, that as you look at making additional cuts and changes to the administrative contract, that it is important, and that people outside of this district who haven't yet had the opportunity to experience its excellence, do look at that and consider that. And it worries me that I've not, that I've received such non-positive responses, I guess, as I, I seek to elicit interest in this district. So, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Clover, before you step away, just want the board to know that Clover has a newly minted PhD at University of Wisconsin-Madison.
Oh, you did it! Yay!
Glenn Reindl, 1024 Brawley Street. First off, I don't appreciate the shortness of this podium. I don't know if it was intentional, but I'll deal with it. I think the administrators paved the way for exactly what I was saying here. My message to you is, you really need to start working on the pay schedule for educators. I'm being very open when people who are union, non-union, I'm not involved as a leadership position, they come and talk to me. I had several come and talk to me this week about their concerns with human resources. These are people who took sizable pay cuts to come back to the community, and there's nothing there for them. There is potentially a fraction of the cost of inflation. And remember, we're going on five years now. Nobody, not $1, has been spent by this district on increasing teacher salaries permanently in five years. If you want to know how to run a good balance sheet, don't pay your employees. It works. But if you run a big district, you've got a hole you're gonna have to dig out. And I don't know who's telling you to solve bargaining before you put in a pay schedule. The pool's already been established on what all raises are gonna come out of. That's done. Raising their pay. If you don't want to give me a raise, if you think I make enough already, don't. But all of the peers that I work with deserve a lot more attention and a lot more pay. And so, what I'm saying to you is that you really need to take a look at the pay structure. It has nothing to do with bargaining. You can settle bargaining now, you can settle bargaining later, but you have to give people a future. People who walk in and say, "What am I gonna raise?", and say, "Wait until we get bargaining done." Now, understand, you can say, "Well, the union back and forth, it took years." At any moment, from the superintendent's direction, you could've said, "Let's impose." Instead, the attempt seemed to be, "We're gonna force you to accept this rather than imposing." You have the ability to end any contract negotiation at any time and just simply impose. And you didn't do it, and you've got a five-year hole dug. And there are people, including administrators and teaching assistants and others, that I feel like you've been set up to be afraid of, the future payments of them. How is WASSAO doing it? Giving step and lane for education and giving them a raise every year for their increased value? You don't think a teacher that came here in 2010 is any more valuable in 2015? Not $1 more valuable? That's insane! And I'm saying this from everyone else. Please, take a look at the pay schedule. Take a look. If you want to take a look, say, "Hey, in 2010, what was a new teacher making in Marshfield? Let's take a look if they did, took six credits, let's take a look if they're looking on. What are they making now?" Find any district that will find zero growth, and that's where we're gonna get our teachers from. Every other district is where they're gonna be headed. There is a dearth of good teachers. Talk to those building-level administrators and saying, "Are you getting one, two, and three good candidates that you get to choose from?" Or are you saying, "Um, we'll take that one because we need somebody in that department, or we'll take that one." It goes both ways. Quality people cost money. I speak not for myself, I speak for the fact that I'm a much better teacher when I have good teachers around me who are willing to say, "Yes, the district put a stake in me, and I have a future." Right now, there is no future. There is no future except a percentage that maybe they will or will not get. And if we focus on just bargaining, saying, "Hey, you're only gonna lose 2% to inflation this year," that's not a really good motivation or incentive. Teachers deserve more. Teachers deserve more than they're getting paid. Just so you understand, everybody who's saying, people who have four years' experience and department heads are still making right around $36,000 a year in some areas, because they're young, they're new, they may be halfway to their masters. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. That's not a livable wage long-term when there's no future. So, please, take a look at the pay schedule. Remember, bargaining and the pay schedule that you create, even if it's temporary, lane and step, it lets people know that their time and their investment in this community makes them very important, and you recognize that, and you move forward with that. So, please, take a look at that. There's a reason why people aren't here. Some people have lost faith in your ability. I'm here because I know you have that ability. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Carl?
I could switch places with Jean Kepi if I could, please.
Sure.
I feel like I'm in the legislation.
I'm Jean Kepi. I live at 1317 Blackberry Trail. I'm also the principal at MacDill Elementary School. And I too am here to touch base with you on agenda item 9E4, the administrative contracts, and just share a few thoughts with you as one of those people who came to the district less than four years ago, and reasons why I came to the district, and reasons why if I were to consider thinking about a move at this point in my career, that I would have to ask myself some questions. So, when I first came to the district and was hired, I was looking for some stability, leaving a position that I'd been in for several years, but looking for stability. And that stability comes when you have a contract that you know is going to be there with you from year to year. It comes from knowing that you have an administrative team that is there to support you, to guide you, to mentor you, to redirect you as the need arises, but to truly be there. And it's often unsettling for a brand-new recruit coming into a district, into any position, to think that maybe now that I've signed a contract, I might be having some changes to that contract. And for me, I made a commitment to the Stevens Point Area Public School District and to the Stevens Point community itself. I believe I'm living that commitment right now. And as I look at a position, one of the questions I would ask myself is, if I am going to commit myself to that community and to that organization, the district, is that district willing to commit itself and its resources and its support to me and the work that I'm doing on behalf of our students and this community? We have young administrators who are coming in as we hire, and I think that's a really neat thing. We grow them, we mentor them. We spend a lot of money, a lot of mentoring time, bringing them up to speed as quickly as you can with what the district is all about, with legal issues, with student issues, with helping them understand the culture and the community, the connections that we have here in Stevens Point and specifically in our district. That's a neat thing to be doing. I'm very honored to be a mentor from some, for some of our new hires. I am wondering, though, when I look at the cost of the hiring, the mentoring, the time that we put in, both time and cost to that process, if we're going to be retaining those younger administrators? Or if they, like Glenn alluded to, might be looking to be somewhere else to finish out their career, to find another location to be at? We're asking them, like, like you did me, to buy a home, to relocate my family, to start from zero with the community connections that we know are important and vital to ensuring that our schools and our district are successful. And people are willing to do that. I was willing to do that. I'm here, as has been mentioned, I think this is a pretty powerful district. I had choices four years ago, and I chose this district. I still believe we are one of those top forward-thinking districts that I could be a part of, and I'm proud to be a part of it and move us forward. I worry about some of the people coming in who need to know that they have a commitment to them as they come forward. I also would wonder if, when I look at some of the contract ideas that were being talked about at the past few meetings with the HR committee, specifically that idea of the hiring bans that we had approved, you had approved in December, being used to say we aren't going to be giving salaries to people potentially who are at the top end of that ban, and wondering if someone coming in new would say, "I'm not sure I want to go there, or I'll go there, but I don't know that I'm gonna commit myself enough to be there and finish out my career in that district." And I'd like to think that if we've grown great people, and we've hired the best, and I believe we have, I'd like to know that we can retain them and continue that solid tradition. We can't grow, we can't grow our kids, we can't grow ourselves. We cannot become that world-class district we want to be without having consistency in the leadership position. So, at this point, we've had some conversations about three areas that are being talked about, were talked about at the HR committee, that are gonna be brought up again tonight. We also have had some conversation in those committees that I've heard about benefits that are offered in other contracts. Our contracts don't have some of the benefits that other districts do. We aren't asking to add more into the contract. We simply are asking at this point, I am asking at this point. I shouldn't say "we." It's me. I am, and truly recommending that you make no changes to the language in the contract. I think that adds sense of commitment to the leadership team, and I think it helps people feel more stable and hopefully willing to stay and be a part of what we can do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. All right, Carl, you're up.
Good evening. My name is Carl Kaufman. I live at 2065 Windsor Court, number seven in Plover. And I'm currently the principal at Plover Whiting Elementary School, and I've had the honor and privilege of being an elementary principal in this district since 1993, when I began a 12-year tenure at Jackson School, and have since moved to Plover Whiting. The school board administrative team have, for many years, had a relationship which reflects an understanding and appreciation of the important and unique role which administrators play in operating the school district on the school board's behalf. We are where the buck stops in terms of our building-level leadership. Our employee groups serve wonderfully and capably each day. However, at the end of the day, we are ultimately responsible for hiring and supervising staff, working with students to see that they learn and are safe, and responsibly and effectively working with the parents of each and every student. In the district's decision and appeals process, administrators play multiple roles in making decisions as well as hearing and addressing appeals to complaints before they reach the board level. In many cases, they are the last level of appeal, allowing the school board to focus on its other very important roles in conducting the business of the school district. The current contract was developed over a period of six months following the expiration of the MS Administrative Agreement on June 30th, 2013. Its language already reflects a number of eliminated benefits previously provided to administrators. The school board should not apologize for paying its administration more in salary and in providing benefits not available to other employee groups, given the unique role and much greater responsibility of their roles in the school district. I'm recommending that the school board not make any changes in the administrative contracts at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're on to presentations. Emily is not here tonight. The WASE legislative update. Meg?
I'm just gonna make two short comments. There are a number of us who are going to the school board convention down in Milwaukee next week, so I think that will bring us a whole group of things that we'll want to be talking about as we're moving forward. The second note that I wanted to make, and I don't know if Attila wants to comment on it at all, but we as a board have received a number of communications this past week with respect to some current legislative discussion about moving forward to create a new board for grading, grading schools. There clearly is more to come. I'm very happy to see that our local legislators are on it, active, and very interested in receiving input from us as to how they can help create or retain a system in Madison that is of the best that can occur for, for the children and families in our district. So, I think it's a never-moving target down in Madison. It has been for quite a while, and I know our administration will keep us informed and will let us know what we can do to help. The final point I want to make, as I learned recently that I'm the official delegate for the district for the convention next week, I am going to be meeting with administration next week. They're going to be providing me with the input so that I'm able to correctly vote down in Milwaukee in the way that can best serve the district. But if any board members have any input or questions or thoughts about some of those delegate votes, I'm more than happy to talk with you about it before next week or when we're down there next week. we're down there next week. Thank you.
I just want to follow up to what Meg said about the Assembly Bill 1, or AB 1. Principals around the state, superintendents, also received an email from Representative Thiesfeldt, who introduced the legislation and then forwarded it on to the board. We have had several administrators already form a response and sent those to the representative by email. The hearing is going to be conducted at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday down in the Capitol. We will have representation there by some of our cabinet members. And some of us are continuing to provide our input regarding that bill, which, in some ways, is very draconian in what might occur at the individual school level and a district level. And the other concerning thing about that legislation and other legislation that may be introduced in this session is that there is a very strong push to fast-track it and to get it passed rather quickly. Some of those things have not been thought through, AB 1 in particular, which many legal minds have said is unconstitutional, but that would only be determined if it were to be brought to the courts. So, it is very important that while our local legislators are supportive of our efforts and don't think AB 1 is a great idea or a good idea, it's important that we contact as many other representatives and state senators as possible to make sure that our voices are heard. So, we're in the midst of doing that, and we'll provide the board with some information that you can then use to contact not only our local people, but in particular, for example, Representative Thiesfeldt, who submitted the legislation.
Thank you, and thank you, Meg. Introduction of School Board candidates. I didn't see either Sam or Judy here. Are either of you here? All right, we have Sam Levine and Judy Ranow, who have signed up to run for school board. There's also Meg Erler and myself. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce to the public who the candidates are this Consolidated Task Force update. I've had a lot of questions about this lately, so I'm just letting you know it'll be on the February agenda. Administration will be bringing forward timelines and recommendations, and then we will be able to get into some serious discussions about it from that point on. Kim Shearic, walking quorums.
I was going to pass on this, but some concerned citizen from last week, Monday, reminded me that if I don't bring it to the board's attention, that they will file a complaint. So, I am concerned about the continuation of some board members gathering after board meetings and/or committee meetings and discussing board matter, or that looks like it could be board matter. This can be construed as a walking quorum, which is a violation of Wisconsin open-meeting laws. At the Wasbe Convention I have attended, and we've all attended one, it has stated over and over again, "Once the meeting is completed, board members need to leave the room or the building and discontinue their conversation." My level of concern was heightened when I walked into the Bliss Center last Monday, January 5, 2014, excuse me, 15, evening after the business committee meeting had adjourned. This meeting had adjourned for about a half hour, and yet there was four board members standing in a huddle in deep discussion and a fifth board member sitting in the room. And again, this was drawn to my attention by someone in the audience who also I got a phone call from. Okay? I believe we board members, we have board members, need to be self-aware of this violation and stop this behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. President's report. Request for information. This is just for board members. I'm going to go over this because I actually apologize, I don't think that we've covered it completely since we've had new members on the board. If you want to request information, please include the superintendent, his assistant, the president, and the vice president. If it is to go to an administrator from there, the superintendent will forward it, and then the request will come back to the entire board, or the answer will come back to the entire board. So, president, vice president, superintendent, and Sarah is who all requests should go to. Negotiations update. There is a meeting tomorrow with the SPAEA. It is the only thing on the calendar right now, so 6:30 to 8:30. School board meeting in January, just wanted to make--
Could I just ask a question on that?
Yeah.
I know that the negotiating team from SPAEA, I thought, and I might not be accurate, mentioned that there was a new negotiating team, and I'm wondering if there is or there isn't. And if there isn't, when would there be one? Or does it change? I don't know anything about that.
Okay. Well, we can have someone ask Florence to ask tomorrow if that's the case. I've not--
Thank you.
--heard the same thing, but you bet. Second board meeting in January, we're going to have one. That was pretty much why it was on here, just wanted to make sure we know. The reason I mentioned it is because our superintendent searched, the applications are due February 1st, so it's really not something we're going to be able to dig into until past that meeting. So, kind of taking ideas for what we may want to dig into at that meeting, where we think we ought to go. We'll have a little extra time, but we have a lot on our plates. So, let me know what you're thinking in terms of where we, things you might want to talk about at that meeting. Teachers on call. This was a question Jeff and I, it was requested to be on the agenda, and we wondered if anybody had an opposition to Skyping them, having them give their presentation since they are located in Minnesota. All right, what do you think?
That's fine.
Okay. Then what we'll do is contact them, see if they can give us their presentation, the, was it Human Resources Committee? Thought it'd be a valuable presentation for the whole board to have, but rather than the expense of them coming here, we'll try to take care of that through Skype. Actually, if that's all right, I'll see if we can get them for the second January meeting.
And I apologize for interrupting. Just remind them, I mean, because it was quite the long presentation that they had, just remind them that if there is a limit or if we want to limit them.
Okay. WASB Conference, January 20th through the 23rd. I just wanted to explain this a little bit to the public. There are seven of us attending. The theme this year is "Every Child, Every Day," and we're kind of at a critical juncture. Lots of legislation coming through, and I want to thank the public for the opportunity to send us every year. You know, it's your tax dollars that pay for us to go. I want you to know that we get on there. We are in seminars all day long, meeting other school boards, other administrators. It is an excellent, excellent process. I always come back a little overwhelmed with the amount of information that I take in, but just wanted to take a moment to thank the public for allowing us to do that every And that is it for me. Superintendent's report.
The only item I want to highlight is the first-ever open house that we had at SPAS. We held it on Friday, and it was for 9th graders, and they had a chance to visit with the Career and Technical Education, World Languages, and Art Departments, and it was a huge success. And I think it'll spawn other kinds of open houses so that kids who are transitioning into SPAS get a really bird's-eye view of what it is that they have the opportunity to experience. So, other than that, I'll be glad to take any questions. I did include Trish's question that she'd asked about the business committee that's in there as well.
And I just wanted to make a comment that Trish Baker and I were able to attend that Friday night, and we were really surprised at how many people told us, how many students showed up. They were so pleased, and they were very excited. It was the first time they'd done it, and they're already excited about the next one that's coming up. They had young kids, they had older kids, a lot of the community was there, and a lot of the businesses. I thought it was great going through each of the programs and seeing what was going on in there. Very, very engaged people, so, very appreciated.
Could I just add on that, seeing you brought the topic up of the technical education open house? Same thing, everything that Chris said, but I actually have had a conversation with several people in the district that didn't have, that don't have 9th graders but have 10th graders or 8th graders, and they want to come. They really want to come. I explained that I thought that it was open to the public, that, I mean, that any student can come, but they didn't know about it. And I've actually talked to Brigida about this a little bit, too. I really think that it needs to be marketed. What a wonderful, wonderful event that was. People that were, what I thought was really extra terrific were the excitement, the level of excitement, enthusiasm of the students, so excited to learn and so excited to learn about technical education. It was just wonderful, terrific event.
Thank you. Any other questions on the superintendent's report? Okay. Then we are on to number eight, which is the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Superintendent?
Second.
Any comments or questions on--
I do have a question. Oh, my God, where's my consent agenda? Of course, on A, I was just wondering, the item that we, when we reconvened into open session, has not, has that now, the retirement agreement and waiver claim, has that been added to our online packet?
I believe it has, but I'll double-check.
Okay. Because someone had--
I did the packet, and I don't, I'll double-check.
Okay. Because someone had told me it wasn't, but that was a handful of days ago, or at least, you know, a couple of days ago.
I will double-check.
So, if you can do that and make sure that gets on there, I'd greatly appreciate it. So, thank you.
Yep. I just had one comment, and it's about the monthly bills. And to me, it's been very enjoyable, frankly, for me to read through these bills, to see how many of our staff members are doing things during the week, during the weekend, to further their education and/or to further the education of our kids. Now, I can speak to, and I'll pull him out because he's in the bills this month, and he was in the bills last month, and he'll be in the bills next month, and he's always there, but Mr. Klopodick at SPAS, who has been the moderator for the debate team forever, and who takes, I think, probably most of the weekends of, throughout the school year, and takes a group of kids to wherever it is they need to go to compete and debate. He, I'm sure, doesn't make much money, and he, I'm sure, is very careful about how much he spends. And I know from personal experience that he is responsible for those kids 24/7 when they are at whatever community they are overnight, usually for two nights. So, I just wanted to express my heartfelt thanks to people in our district who are going above and beyond that it isn't a 7:00 a.m. or 7:30 till 4:00 o'clock job. It's evenings and it's weekends in pursuit of betterment for their education so they can better educate our students, or for the betterment of the education of our students. And to me, again, that's our goal. That's what we're all about as a district, is preparing all of our kids for success. And our bills show us every month that they're stepping up to do it during the week and on the weekends, and I'm just real appreciative of it.
Thank you. All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries 8 to 0.
Awesome. We're on to Business Services, and the first agenda item is a report from our business chair.
I will not belabor the new GASP reporting standards unless, of course, you've got insomnia, and it will help, I promise. Our meeting, as Kim pointed out, our meeting was a little short this last time, last week. We didn't have a lot of things to cover, although I think next month will make up for that, because I think next month will probably go long. But the highlight of the meeting was this memo that Dr. Owens prepared for us on GASP, and my first reaction of this memo was that maybe there's something sinister here going on. But after talking with him and kind of working through it, and then on our committee, Joe Frischie from Century actually gave some good insight on this. What this memo says essentially is that the, our employees, or the district employees' contributions to WRS will now be added to our financial reporting and our statements, essentially. And I actually had a quote in one of the media things about saying it was a frighteningly large number. It might be, but it's never been reported before. So, my question was, why is this happening now? And I was afraid this might be some sort of, you know, thing from Madison. But in fact, it's a national standard that is being adopted state by state by state. And what Mr. Frischie pointed out to us in our Business Services Committee was that this has been the status quo or standard operating procedure for private enterprise for years and years and years, to show how much of the operating budget needs to go into funding retirement benefits. And it's, the reason that it's really come forward is because there are many, many states in the country who their pension and retirement benefits are underfunded, and this is a way to be able to see the numbers. So, I think Dr. Owens put in here that it's to provide transparency in reporting and to be more accountable, and I think that it actually does do that. So, we may see, and starting after June 30th in 2015, we may start seeing the number, the WRS number, what the district contributes to WRS each month, or I'm sorry, actually, I guess it's just at the end of the year. We may start seeing that number very clearly in our financial statements, and it might be a frighteningly large number because of how much is contributed. But I think that it's important to be able to see that and understand it in looking at the total financial spreadsheet for the district. That was the highlight of our Business Services Committee. Yeah. Good insomnia medicine there.
Okay. Thank you. Tom?
Tom's not here, but I can just, the only thing in addition that I'll say to what Trish said, who gave an excellent summary of what the new GASP regulations are, is that the DPI will provide, or the state, rather, will provide a comparison list so that you'll be able to go online and see all of what the districts contribute, as well as what the employees contribute. But it's primarily for employer contributions. So, it's not just going to be an individual district's financial reports and audits, but it'll be actually online, and you can then take a look at all of the districts. And they'll typically do it by alphabetical order.
This actually impacts all municipalities, all government entities. I think that he said that there are 1,400 different entities that will now be reporting this.
Yeah, and the state of Wisconsin. Right.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Educational services. First thing we have is a report from our chair.
Thank you. The Educational Services Committee met at 6:30 on January 6. We also did not have a huge agenda, but we had a great agenda, as usual, because we are very positive and productive in that department. It's very exciting. We had, you'll notice on the Agenda 9, B, 2, and 3, those two are action items from our committee, the introduction to athletic training course, and we're asking for an MOA, Memorandum of Agreement, with UWSP. This is really an exciting class that we're asking you to approve. Students will be able to get college classes, get a taste of college classes, along with UWSP professors and our staff at SPAS, working together collaboratively with our students. Students who pass these classes will get not only credits at SPAS, but also university credits. There are seven students currently enrolled. We have another position available. Students will pay about $10 for this class, and the district and UWSP will pick up the balance, 50/50 each, about $270. This is a really exciting chance for kids to take a look at what a college-level course looks like and feels like, and to have that collaboration with UWSP, I think, is great. The other item, 9B3, is a joint curriculum advance standing MOU with the Wisconsin Indian Head Technical College. Students who take classes, and the classes are similar to the classes and have the same content as some of the classes that are ordered, offered at that college, they will take the classes, and if they can maintain a grade B and, I think it's a 3.0 GPA, they will go and then go to that college, they will have advanced placement, so they won't have to take those classes that are comparable. Another collaborative, I think, for our students, which I think is great. So, they'll be talking about that. I think some of the counselors will be talking to kids who take some of these classes, and these classes are really great. The third item that was on our agenda is the English Language Arts Program. The staff is working now to begin developing the ELA Curriculum Review. They have got members from all our different schools and all different areas in our district, staff working on this. They'll include Common Core standards, ongoing professional development assessments, and it's a collaborative effort. There is a lot of work, there's a lot of excitement, and they presented some of the information. They'll be coming back to our committee with more information. They're doing it a little bit differently, and I really encourage board members to come to one of these meetings. They will be coming back to find out how this process works, because our staff does a tremendous amount of work in educating our students for-- a tremendous amount of work in educational students for, educational services for our students, and you really get to see the meat and potatoes of what they're looking at, all the different areas, the vendors that they look at, and how they fit what we want now in education for our kids. Our next meeting, I think, is February 3rd at 6:30. We haven't set our agenda yet, but the, I believe, point of discovery will be, the charter will be presenting there, and we have some other items that we haven't discussed yet.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We have two action items under educational services, introduction to athletic training course memorandum of agreement. Do we have someone speaking to that?
Keel, Ken, if we need to. There are questions?
Any questions on that?
I'll move approval.
Second.
On discussion, I would just like to ask, how did this come about? This is really cool. This is a neat collaboration with UWSP.
The most interesting thing, and Chris did a good job of explaining what this course was about, but one of the most interesting elements of it is it will be conducted in a telepresence environment. So, the professor will be at the university, the students will be at SPAS, and they'll be participating with students at the university via the telecommunication connection. And we've had students who've been interested in this field at SPAS for years, and as many of you know, they assist the trainers and learn about athletic training at the school, but this will give them the opportunity then to take the class and then to obtain college credit, and then really get a chance to see if it's something that they would like to do for a career path also.
And the cost is $10?
Right.
That's all it'll be for the student?
Just for supplies, yeah.
And this will be starting for next school year?
Correct.
Okay. Wonderful.
No, it's next semester.
Oh, the spring.
Yeah, it's next semester.
Next semester.
Great. Yeah, I think this is great. Thank you.
Lisa?
Is this any different than any of our other youth option plans?
It's really under the new rule for course options. So, the state changed that, actually, I take that back, they didn't change it, but they added an additional program called course options. And under that system, the district and the university will split essentially the cost for the credits 50/50, which is a little bit different than youth options. So, in this particular case, students won't have any of the cost, but the district will pay half, and the university will pay half in support of the students.
But the theory behind it is the same?
Essentially the same, yes. Essentially the same.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yep, Kim?
I was just going to say basically what Trish said, you know, ditto on this. I talked to my son briefly on this, and I'm going to put a plug in there, because one principal will love this, that my son is a strength and conditioning coach at Fargo, North Dakota, Bison, who just won their fourth conference champion. So, go Bison, because he was raising his hand out there. So, my son was very interested, hoping that this would have been around about six years ago. So, it'll put certain students in the path of a career that they would be interested in.
Right.
So, thank you.
I think the greatest thing about it is I know some kids have been reluctant to pursue taking a class at UWSP, who could do it because of the transportation situation where they wind up possibly not being able, missing a class period at SPAS because of going back and forth. And so, this will be great, because they're going to be able to do it, and they're going to be able to stay right at the high school. So, I think it's an incredible experiment, and hopefully, it will prove successful, and it will open the doors to other classes that are going to be able to be offered in this mode.
Brian Casey's been working closely with the university to set up the connection, and so that this is our first test, and then hopefully, there will be more opportunities, like just as you said.
Sounds great.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I just, the motion, was it on both of them? Or was it, it wasn't clear?
Just the first.
Just the very first. Okay.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Great. The Joint Curriculum Advanced Standing Memorandum of Agreement for WITC. Is this you as well?
Yes. And this is a situation where we have students who currently take the courses of civil engineering and architecture and the building construction courses at SPAS, and have an interest in these fields. None of them have taken advantage of, going to Wisconsin Indian Head Technical College yet, but the technical college would like to have this relationship established, so that should any students choose to attend, they would then receive the credit upon entry, the advanced standing credit. So, it's an opportunity for the students who are interested to say, here's a technical college that's supporting you and willing to recognize the work that you've done, should you choose to attend the next year for post-graduate, for post-secondary work.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Questions or comments for Keel on this?
Kind of a dumb question. Where are they located? They're not around here, are they?
No, they're north-northwest, and there are a few locations. Rice Lake.
Like Rice Lake.
Rice Lake.
Thank you. Very good.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keel. All right. Nothing from either student services or technology, so that puts us at human resources. And the first agenda item is a report from our human resources committee chair, which is Kim Sherrick.
I'm not going to really read a report, because it's mostly about the administration contract, so if we can move right on to two, and then I'll kind of follow up with the memo at that time.
Absolutely. Recommendations for employment. You have a revised copy at your seats. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any questions on this? Yep, Lisa?
On the alteration of the contract, did, I mean, does this, did they have contracts for the full year, or did they just have a half a year contract that were changing it in the middle of the year? If one's a reduction, I mean, I get the addition, but if one's a reduction, and it's for the same class, why, you know, it just-
The teacher requested that there be a reduction, and so we have a teacher with an available spot.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? All right. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
All right. You have a memo on current district vacancies. That's something that's been presented to HR recently. It's just a courtesy, so you have an idea. Anything you wanted to add to that, Kim?
Nope. This was just one of the members had asked for this, and this will be a monthly report that hope, that I apologize, Ms. Haley, I want to call you Florence, and that's not proper, to hold up for us or give us the information, and I asked that if we could present it at the board every time to keep you guys all informed also. If you have any questions, I see Ms. Haley is there in the audience.
I have one question. As far as, I noticed that there was a retirement from the transportation department, and I did not see any posting here of that, and I'm guessing that we have other vacancies as well in that department. Is that something that will be reported on?
Yes, it will. We just recently received those, that they came in and got them on the agenda, and we will continue to update that monthly as we go along. So, yes, that will also be placed on the vacancies list as well.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? All right. Then we are on to administrative contracts, which is an action item, and I will hand it over to Kim.
Basically, my memo kind of states it all. This was talked about at the HR committee since August. It kind of got pushed back behind. We asked Ms. Haley to do a couple different research things, so it's not something that came quickly to us. It was hung up on a two-two split vote, so I, as the chairperson, suggested that we, I don't want to use the word suggested, because I guess that's used loosely, is that we bring it to the board, so the board has the information on it. In the meantime, I was also informed that both city and county levels, if an item fails or even discussed at a committee level, the item can be sent directly to the board level. So, my request is not something out of the ordinary to bring directly to the board. One of the members there had a couple requests, and that was, it's kind of listed under the recommendations. It probably shouldn't have, because there was no recommendation, but I just want to bring that all to the board. There was a few notes that I wanted to, and I apologize if I can read my handwriting, that was spoken today in the public comments, and it is things, unfortunately, we have heard from our other employees. We need to keep all of our employees' contracts and pay schedules, so we can recruit and retain quality teachers in administration. I understand that. We also, if that, if any of the contract talk, it gets unsettling, there's no commitment, and that we should compare ourselves to other districts. This is not something that, this is uncommon, that we have heard about either through our, just our administration. This is something that our other staff has also brought to our attention. So, this is something that we have heard over and over again, anytime we talk about pay schedules, employee handbooks, or now, the administration contracts. And basically, how this started is there was a WASB convention regarding simplifying contracts and removing duplication. And that was done up in Wausau, and that was one of the things, I believe, that Meg Ehrler, a couple months ago, or maybe like around July, brought forward. And that's when we started looking at the contracts, is removing any of the duplication language that is used also in our employee handbook that is in the contracts. Now, I don't know if it was included, I asked it to be included, was the WASB recommendation and the AWSA Association of Wisconsin School Ministers' recommendation, and I don't know, I think we have some on our desk. It's kind of hard to read, so I don't know if the board members had a chance to go through that and read any of their recommendations. I think that was, you know, so I think I want to bring it up for discussion, if we want to discuss each item individually, and also another subject that some, one of the board members or the committee members that had brought up. You know, it's something that the board should look at for fiscal and budget responsibilities. We've heard it over and over again when we look at negotiations with any other employee group, is we need to make sure that we can fiscally be responsible of holding this continuous increase in their wages. There was one other. And something that was mentioned up there at the podium is that in our HR, I will have to go back and listen to our minutes, but there was never discussion about not giving an administration, an administrator that gets out of those bans, which Attila did say that there were hiring bans, they weren't retaining bans. I don't know if that's the wording that you used, it was more of a hiring ban that was discussed that night. But it was never that, they would never get another increase or, I guess, increase in their salary. We looked at it, or it was discussed, that instead of going on their base, it was more of a stipend then. And I believe that's what I understand that that discussion was. There was no discussion about not giving someone an increase in salary once they reached that band of the hiring ban that was discussed that night. So, I just want to make that clear.
Anything else?
I guess then, one of the proposals or suggestions that we should discuss is, in the contract is the salary change language, and instead of making that it goes on the base, is giving it the option of the superintendent to do a base or a stipend increase. That was one of the suggestions of the change.
Did anyone, someone want to make a motion, or are we just going to have the conversation? How would you like to handle it?
I want to know, I just would like to make a general comment. My understanding is that these contracts were together two years ago. This is the first time that we've worked through the contracts. There were three objectives that were noted by the district at the time that that previous board did their work and gave the reasons for why they were doing it. As best I can tell, in the short time I've been on the board, those objectives have been achieved, and they're being achieved. We are attracting and retraining high-quality leadership. We, as that previous board determined, we reflected appropriate compensation due to the increased ratios of students and employees per administrator among comparable districts. And number three, the contracts reflect appropriate compensation due to additional district-level duties not present in other districts. Again, as best as I can tell, from the time that I've been on this board, we've got some great administrators who are going above and beyond the call to do their best work for the district, and I'm frankly, at this point in time, not interested at all in taking anything from these contracts that have only been in operation for two years, because they're working, they're doing what the previous board wanted them to do. And I took a look at all the comparables that were provided, and the practical reality in this area, which is, I think, how the previous board came to the decision they came to, it's all apples and oranges. I mean, one district gives one thing, one district gives another. One has one benefit, one has another. One has a certain level of a benefit, one doesn't. But ultimately, I have confidence that the board, in the not-too-distant past, came up with contracts that I think we should allow to continue to do the work that they're doing, which is attract and retain high-quality leadership for our district.
Yep, Lisa?
So, I won't be voting for any changes. I'll just make that clear.
When I attended one of the WASB conferences, the issue was to simplify it and just take out of the contract the items that were already in the handbook. When I went through the list, a lot of them are already that way, some of them are listed separately. I'm a little confused as to, you know, we're supposed to go to these conferences to educate ourselves and get new ideas and stuff, and when we come for a recommendation, whether it's been a month, or a year, or two years, or 12 years, I think we, you know, doing our due diligence, need to at least consider what's been brought up. I would like to see the contracts simplified. I would like to give the administration more flexibility. So, I would like to see the duplication removed, so that it just refers back to the handbook, and that, you know, any administrator that's coming in doesn't have to say, well, okay, it doesn't, this certain area is in the contract, so does that mean every administrator gets it differently, instead of just saying, no, you get what's in the handbook? So, they can be assured that all administrators, including themselves, when they come, they're going to get that. They're not going to get less than what's in the handbook. I would actually think that would be a plus. I would also think it would be prudent of us when we go through policies, it seems that we're trying to be as flexible as possible, giving the administration as much legroom to move around. If we're being recommended by WASB or the administrators who, that group, if they're suggesting this, they're the experts, not us, I think we need to at least consider it. As far as the bans, I think that's our decision, that I don't think they really gave an input on. But as far as simplifying it, and, yeah, I think we need to do that. I think there, I don't see where there's a downside with that for administrators.
Let me ask a question. Let me understand, what are our choices tonight? I'm presuming that our choices are to vote on the three recommendations that Kim has made, or to do nothing? And I'm asking you.
The board can do whatever it wishes.
Okay. That's not a helpful answer.
Well, let me explain it this way.
If you're looking for direction, there was none that came out of the HR committee. As Kim pointed out, the recommend- As Kim pointed out, the recommendations that were made there failed in a two-to-two tie.
Okay, well, let me just ask, if we choose to do nothing tonight, will the contracts go out next month to our administrators as identical to what they are now?
No, if the board chooses to do nothing tonight, then what will happen is that at the end of January, we will bring forward administrative, individual administrative contracts with names and salaries and individual contracts for renewal. We have to do that prior to the end of January. If the board chooses to make changes to these contracts, because they're really templates, if you choose to make changes to them, then we would bring those forward with those changes, and then give the board some indication at the end of January, at the meeting, when we bring them forward for renewals, whether or not our administrators are going to accept those.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Does that answer your question, Chris?
Yes, yes, so if I'm...
Yeah, I think I'm going where you're going.
I would just want to summarize in my own words, and I want you to correct me where I'm wrong, okay? So if we choose tonight to do nothing, then you will prepare contracts, and those contracts will be identical to the template, however, with the information filled in. And those then offers will be tendered to each of the administrators.
Upon board approval at the end of January.
Okay, all right. And if, in fact, then we make these changes, then you will offer different contracts with different terms, and maybe they'll accept and maybe they won't?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, did that answer your question?
Yeah. I'm assuming if we don't make any changes, you're going to come back with the administrative recommendations on all those contracts? If we don't change anything?
We will return to the board at the second meeting in January with individual contracts for administrator renewals. I just want to make one minor clarification to what Meg said. We are into this first contract post MS agreement a year and a half, so it's not been two years.
All right, okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I am going to make the motion on making, I'm going to go at each one individually, and then we can go from there. I'm going to make the motion of changing on D2 salary, or D salary number two, changing the language to base/stipends, and I believe it continues saying on the, on the, on the performance by the administrator in his or her position in the district. And it is still based with the superintendent's approval, I believe that's how that reads. And I am, because to me, they're still going to get their increase or their stipends if, and the board then has the chance to approve which either one that they, oh, I apologize. My base or stipends is on the second sentence. And, you know, then the board can choose which one at that time, a little bit more fiscal responsibility, and I'll make that motion.
So what you're saying is you want to put in the contract flexibility for the district?
Correct. Either it's going on the base salary or a stipend.
I'll second that.
Amy, would you read the motion back?
One second.
Any discussion?
The motion I have is to change the language under D salary number one, that any increase would be awarded to the base or as a stipend.
Well, technically it would be underneath number two, D salary two. Salary should be awarded to administrators base or stipend annually. The board may provide the superintendent with the funds of the performance base salary increase. Or again, I'm not an English specialist or scholar, we could leave that up to the lawyers of where that wording would fall into play in that category.
But it's number two, not number one, as your memo indicates.
My memo indicates number two, though.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. At least my form does.
No, and my notes said two, I just typed it. Okay.
Great. Any discussion or questions? Then a roll call vote, please.
Well, I guess I'd like to make a comment. And I presume that following this vote will be the other two. I just, I have a couple of thoughts on this, and I'll, we are in the process of hiring a new superintendent. We have a tremendous amount of uncertainty coming to our district. We are going to be losing the person at the top, and we have a tremendous group of administrators. I don't know why we would introduce any amount of uncertainty into the future of how this district is going to be managed. I feel like we are just, even by bringing this up, we're introducing uncertainty into at least the people that are sitting in the audience here. I have to say, I just want to hearken back a couple of months. A couple of months ago, I think we were sitting on opposite sides, Alex, of the room, you were strenuously advocating that we should turn the district over to our administrators because they are such a competent, qualified group of people. And now, we're sort of, it's sort of looking like we're pulling the rug out from under them in reconsidering their salaries, or not salaries, reconsidering their contracts. And I'm listening to them as they've all come up here, one after another, and very eloquently said, "Don't introduce any uncertainty into our lives. We want to work here, we love working here, we're committed to this district, but we want some certainty." And when we have our superintendent leaving, why would we as a board do that? So I just, I just think that we need to consider the bigger global picture right now of looking, of being in a superintendent search. We have a fabulous group of people, quite frankly, I don't want even one of them to leave. I would consider it successful if, when he retires, that every single one of our administrators are still here, that not one chooses to leave the district. For me, that would be success. And I don't, I don't want to do anything to rock that boat. So I'm going to be voting no, and I presume that the next two, and I won't reiterate my comments, but I'll, I just oppose these at this time.
Kim?
I am not belittling or saying that our administration by no means is not doing their job, and I don't have confidence in them. Because I believe, just like Alex believes, that they are competent people. I am trying to be fiscal, budget responsibility. We have had employee after employee group come up there with their concerns, their wanting to retain, same thing that they spoke about. We had every group come up, yet we have contracts that, whose contract are the only ones that are up to date? The administration. Our teachers aren't, our custodians aren't, and our EAs are still waiting for some compensation after the Carlson debtment. So there is so unsettling in this district. Yes, I don't want to tip the kettle anymore. And by no means, again, I am not belittling any, so you put that wording out there, I did not.
I didn't use the word "belittle."
Well, you basically implied it in my, I do not think our administration is not doing their job, okay? And I just want to make sure that's perfectly clear, and I've told them that. I just think that we need to watch, for one, remove the duplication, simplify, and just change a few of the wordings that, they weren't my recommendations, they weren't really technically another board member's, one of them, or two of them, are WASB's recommendations. And we spend a lot of money on WASB, we go to a lot of their conventions, it was brought back for this recommendation from them. So, but I agree to disagree on that one.
There we go.
I just wanted to make sure.
I just want to make one quick comment about being fiscally responsible. I think this district is extremely fiscally responsible. We're the 14th largest school district in the state, but yet when you look at our administrative costs per pupil, we're 288th in the state. So I would say that that's very fiscally responsible.
Anyone else? And we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Erler?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Motion fails three to five.
I'd like to make my second motion then, also removing the 2% TSA to cabinets, and possibly, and that is in E benefits number 10, and making it a choice of the board annually to participate in that 2% TSA. And the TSA is only for the cabinets, just a...
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Amy, will you read it back, just so we're all clear?
Yeah, to change the language in E benefits number 10, to remove the 2% TSA and make it a board choice, or an annual board choice.
Correct, thank you.
No questions or comments, then roll call vote, please.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Erler?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Motion fails three to five.
And the last one is, it was a recommendation from WASB in E benefit number 13, is insert the recommendation from WASB regarding the reimbursement provision for someone who attends a conference and unexpectedly separates from the implement thereafter, where they reimburse the district. And that was their recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments?
Would this be, I mean, would this be any different than when we send another one of our staff members for tuition reimbursement or whatever, how if they leave early, they have to contribute a portion of that back?
I don't know, the proposal was made by Kim.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, we do do that for other staff, correct?
For all teachers and for all administrators, if they are given tuition reimbursement and they leave the district after they are reimbursed, and there are certain periods of time and then certain reimbursement rates, that is true for all teachers and administrators. This is for conferences, we would, we do not have this for teachers.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Meg, did you have a question?
Nope, that clarifies it.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Erler?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion fails three to five.
I would like to make a motion that we remove the duplication of language if there's something in the contract that is in our handbook that we just refer to the handbook.
I will second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Oh, I apologize, I am going to say, I mean, if you look at the sheet that Meg was talking about earlier, a lot of the other contracts do refer to their handbook versus putting it in their contract. It refers to that it's in the employee handbook versus putting it in their contract.
Right, and that's what I'd like to see.
And I'd like to note that that actually, in most instances, is the case with our contracts as well. So for example, four reads, "The board shall pay the same premium as set forth in the district's employee handbook." Five says, "The board shall pay the same premium as set forth in the district's employee handbook." So there are a number that reference it, so...
Right, it's just not consistent.
Yeah, correct. And your wording was always simplify and be consistent, so that's the only thing that I was asking too, and I believe that Lisa's asking, so...
So we have a motion in a second to, can you, I'm sorry, Amy, could you please read it?
To remove duplications in the contracts and directing them to refer to the handbook.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Evil?
No.
Ms. Erler?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Motion fails three to five.
Thank you, I believe I'm done.
Policy and legislation is next, and the first thing we have is a report from our committee chair, Meg Erler.
And I think we can, again, the work of the committee was really the policies that are in front of you tonight, so I really don't have a report tonight any more than one I spoke about at the beginning of the board meeting. So we can just move forward to the policies.
Okay, if it's all right, I'm going to take a five-minute break, is everybody all right with that? Okay, let's be back at 20, well, that clock.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, please. We'll reconvene after our nine-minute break. Sorry. Okay, we are on to policies, and Meg is going to move us through. And we did agree to put A and C together at the beginning, and then we'll go through six hundreds.
Okay, so let me just, I'm trying to pull myself into the right. Okay, let's start with 185, board committees. And changes, I'm reading the superintendent's report, summary. Changes include edits having a meeting of standing committee chairs develop and present for board approval a slate of citizens to serve on standing committees, clarifying language that is consistent with other board policies, rearrangement of sections for logic and ease of understanding, and additional cross-references. Changes also include a reorganizing and rewording of language to differentiate between standing and temporary or ad hoc committees. We, on the committee, spent quite a bit of time, quite a bit of time on this. We clearly made a fairly significant change from the last time you saw it, based on board input and board questions. So we are proposing that, and we actually, Angel did a wonderful, she was our helper, she did a wonderful kind of calendar of what needs to happen in terms of new board members being appointed, board committees being established, citizen members being recruited, and citizen members being selected to be put on the committees. So we kind of worked through a timeline, because practically speaking, it's a real short window. I mean, the board, new board members are seated in April, and then the committees, you know, begin technically that, you know, beginning of May. And our current policy had the old committee members staying until, I think it was June 1. And practically speaking, when we looked at the calendar, it made things real tight. So again, we are hoping to present that to the board, and it wouldn't be a policy, it would be along the lines of the business services has their kind of annual calendar of this is how it works and what needs to happen when. And so we're planning to present that to board, possibly at the next board meeting, so that board members would see exactly how it's going to lay out in terms of the timing of all that. But in the discussion we had, and it was a very extensive discussion, we ultimately are bringing forward the recommendation that once those committee chairs for the four standing committees are appointed, then those four committee chairs would be responsible for setting up a meeting and sitting down together with all applications. Now, some members apply to just one committee, some members may apply to, you know, I mean, citizens may apply to more than one committee. And it would be up to those four committee chairs to bring forward a slate of citizen members for the board to review and then approve. I'll be real honest, the one concern that was raised at the committee level, both by citizen members and board members, was that there was a concern if a citizen member was on the slate, that one or more board members might, that the conversation, that if one or more board members felt that that citizen member shouldn't be on that committee, that there could potentially be some damaging, disparaging things with respect to a citizen who has applied for the committee. And the committee talked about that at length, about the concern that ultimately that might be the case. You know, the benefit of the committee chair appointing is they do, and it's not discussed. But in this situation, I guess ultimately... But in this situation, I guess ultimately, we are, the committee approved bringing this forward with the understanding, that they hope that all board members would understand that, that we, as a board, need to, when we move forward to appoint citizen members to the committees, we need to act in a way that will not dissuade or discourage people from applying for committees in the future, and that we need to do our best, just like our code of conduct does, that we will not call out individual members of the committee, oh, excuse me, of the community. And it's a kind of a fine line, because we'll be in a situation where our slate that will be in front of us will have names of individual members of the community who are applying for the position. But ultimately, as a number of board members had suggested as we've worked through this policy, because it's been on, I mean, it's been a topic of conversation frankly, as long as I've been on the board, there was, we felt that there was a strong feeling on the part of a number of board members that this should be a board decision, and the board ultimately should have the final say on who is serving on those committees. So, with that long-winded discussion, I will move, I guess I will move to approve 185 as presented with the changes that are referenced and highlighted, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Are you recommending this as a first reading, or period?
No, I'm recommending, yeah. I think this is about the fifth reading we've had.
I need a second?
I'll second. And I just, I'd like to make a comment. As a member of the committee, I really expected this to come through, and the whole meeting would be about a half hour. I think the meeting was about an hour and a half or two. There was a tremendous amount of back-and-forth discussion. I think it's one of the best discussions I've been involved in in committee decisions. I think that some members wanted the, and I was one of them, wanted the chair and possibly the president and the, with information from the superintendent, to choose our community members. But I knew also that there were board members who wanted the board to decide that, and so, we had that discussion, okay, let's play it forward if this happens. Well, what if three members, or two members, or one member says, "I don't want this candidate to be," you're going to have to get reasons, you're going to put a citizen out there, and that's not a good discussion. And one of our committee, community committee members came up with the thought that, after the end, that perhaps the chairs should get those applications and look at who's applied for what, who might be, we could put in and have that information. I think it's a great idea, I think it brings in that not one person, not the whole board is actually involved in it, which they've never been involved in, because a chair has to really have a relationship with those community members, and feel comfortable that they are connecting with the rest of the board members who are on there. So, I think this is a great idea, and I really like the idea of doing this.
I guess I'll just note again, the other concept of having the chairs meet is where you have a citizen member who has indicated they'd be willing to serve on more than one committee. We discussed how that would allow the chairs to really be able to kind of take a look at the background of that citizen member and determine where that best fit would be in light of what other, you know, citizen members have come forward. So, you might have a couple people who have kind of the same skill sets, and it might be better if they were on different committees. So, that's why there was a thought that the committee chairs could take a look at everyone that's applied, what they've applied to, and really try to pull forward the best overall slate for consideration and approval by the board.
Yep. Kim?
When it says standing chair committees, are you even considering the HR committee, even though they don't have a committee member on there?
We discussed that specifically, because one, if someone asked that, and we felt that it was very important that all four committee chairs would be part of it.
I just want to make sure, because that's why I'm reading it. The other thing is, is my thought, what you were just, and I'm going to use, no, I'm not going to say it, is that when a citizen applies for one of these positions, do we really know their background? Do we really know where they're coming from? Would somebody know that I have an accounting background, I have an insurance background? I mean, I've seen the applications that come in. For a chairperson to say, "Okay, you should be on the HR committee because we believe you have this background," I don't believe that's, I understand the concept. I don't think sometimes that's always fair, that you can point them out, or it's someone that you like, or you believe you can get along with. You're kind of limiting then the discussion to what you believe that should go down in your committee. I understand the concept, and I'm willing to try it. I just want people to be open-minded, that it shouldn't be your friend, it shouldn't be my friend on my committee, you want somebody that is going to have a good discussion with it, and not always agree with the chair. That would be my discussion.
Well, it may be helpful then to take a look at prior to the next application, I mean, the next application process, it might be helpful to take a look at that, to take a look at that application and make sure that the questions that we're asking are providing us with the best information that we should have.
The meeting, when all the chairs are going to get together at the conference, that would be a great thing to look at, let's put that on the list of things to discuss, what the application looks like and what we think might need to be added.
And also, it would be, the one other thought I had, and again, we're getting a little off-field, but I don't know if we'd have the ability to allow people to fill it out online, if that could be an option.
That should be an option.
And I don't think it is.
It's 2015, you know? A fillable idea.
But we can take, I guess that would be something that we could ask the experts about.
Which we're doing, we just need board direction that that's how you want to do it.
And I mean, you could do it either way, you could allow people to do it either online or paper copy, because you want people to be comfortable the way they want to do it.
Lisa?
On A3, we have that the standing committee will consist of the superintendent and a designated administrative liaison, and in like our temporary or ad hoc committees, we have the superintendent or his or her designee. And I'm wondering, do we really feel that we need to have the superintendent on every standing committee, or should we word that the same as B, where it's the superintendent or his or her designee? I mean, was there, why'd the committee do that? Was there reasoning for that?
I think it reflects what's currently happening. Currently, the superintendent is sitting on all committees as an ex officio. Now, sometimes, sometimes only the designee is there if the superintendent is not available, and sometimes the superintendent's the only one there, because the...
Well, then, do we want to change it to and/or, to give a little more flexibility there, or do we want both?
I'm comfortable with both.
So am I.
That's fine. On the next page, on eight, I didn't understand the reference that someone would stand in to make sure that there was at least a quorum, to get a quorum makes sense to me, but how many, when it says obtain at least a quorum, I mean, if you do that, you're ultimately saying, you know, you could add, you know, to seven board members.
Well, seven refers to three board members are needed for a quorum.
Eight is what I'm on.
Oh, I'm, no, but I'm just referencing back. Seven states specifically that three board members are required, so typically, the president's sitting in because there aren't three board members present.
Correct, and I get that, but I'm just saying, shouldn't the wording say that he or she is placing an absent committee member to obtain a quorum, not to obtain at least a quorum?
I think that would be fine.
I think it would be fine, I think they're referring to the fact that you need to have a quorum.
Right.
I mean, you can take it out or leave it in, but I don't think it's going to hurt anything. You at least have to, because you at least, if you have six members on the committee, and only two of them are board members, that's, you know what I mean?
And I'm not saying take, obtain.
No, I know, I know what you're saying.
I'm just saying, you really don't, do we want more than a quorum?
No. Well, we've had it, though. We've had members sit in, when there were three members from the committee, we've had other board members asked to sit in. Perhaps one of the community members wasn't there. You try to have seven members, so that you don't have a three-to-three tie or whatever, that's how it was initially devised, the reason they put it in, so...
The phrase "at least" in numbers eight and nine are not meant to suggest that the policy wants more than a quorum. They are there, you could substitute the words "at a minimum," or, as Lisa points out, you could eliminate it, it has no substantive effect.
So, we could remove "at least" from eight and nine?
From eight and nine, yeah.
I apologize, can I just ask a question? Okay, when you said something about you kind of have, you try to have an odd number, so you don't get hung up, why is the HR then different? Because that has an even number.
When that was set up, that was not a, HR was not a committee.
Had to have been set up as a committee. HR committee. I said to be a committee, it had to have been set up as a committee.
Committee which consists of...
But we did not have, when these were set up, way back, with some of this language.
The policies.
Right.
And I guess I'm just stating then, maybe we should add something for the HR committee, is that possibly...
If you add another, if you add another board member, you've got a quorum of the board. If you, if you make it, if you make it five, you've got a quorum of the board.
Then we drop it down to three, because it says a standing committee should also consist up to three voting non-board members.
I know, but you're changing, you're just asking about changing the HR committee, I'm just saying the policy...
I'm just saying, because I'm just kind of rolling off of what you said, you know, you kind of try to make it an odd number, so you don't usually get hung up. And that's the same discussion that, that was kind of happened at the HR.
Yeah.
The reason that the, the reason that the HR committee has four board members as opposed to three is because the other committees have three board members, a student, and at least two other community members, if I'm not mistaken, correct? So, I recall the conversation quite clearly, actually, in the fall of 2010, where the board felt that since the, this committee, that if you only had three, that it wouldn't be sufficient to have as many heads as possible around the table, and they recognized that four would potentially end up with two-two ties, but the board really felt that three was not enough. They really wanted four board members, and especially the HR committee. So, I'm just recalling why that was established.
And I believe, I don't know if it was 2010 or not, there also was conversation about having the HR committee, where it's all board members, because it was, then they didn't have to bring it to the board, so that was a discussion. But I just was rolling off of what you said about the even numbers.
Right.
So, okay, I apologize, Lisa, for the interruption.
No problem. Go ahead. On number 11, it says, "Voting privileges will not be granted to board members who are not members of the standing committee unless they are temporarily appointed in order to obtain a quorum. If they're not temporarily appointed for quorum purposes, they're really considered part of the public, so they wouldn't be..." I didn't understand why that would even be in there.
I think it's just, it's noting that the only time a board member is going to have voting privileges is when they're standing in for another board member.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think it's just explaining, you know...
And to me, it's just common sense, okay. And that would be the next two comments, I have our common sense thing, so, okay. So, I would like to amend the motion to include the removal of "at least" from eight and nine.
Need a second on the amendment?
Second.
Okay, so the first thing we need to vote on is the amendment, which is removing those four words from the whole thing.
Sorry, who was the second?
Me.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Now, we need to vote on the original motion?
The amended...
The amended original motion.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, then, 811.4, again, reading from the superintendent's memo, is, "Changes to this policy include edits clarifying language that is consistent with other board changes, including Policy 185 that we've just done, having committee chairs and the superintendent's designees provide new standing committee member orientations and greater specificity regarding selection process as needed. Clarifying language to differentiate between standing and temporary or ad hoc committees was also included." Again, the substantive change in here is, if you take a look at D1, I had noted a little bit earlier that we talked about that calendar that we were kind of trying to work through to have things kind of happen in a timely basis. So, we are recommending that the citizen members' term commences on July 1 and ends on June 30. It would allow for that process of application, it would allow the committee chairs the time to put together the slate and get that in front of the board members. It would also really allow those citizen committee members to kind of finish up with that school year, and then, you know, in July, begin that process of moving it to the next year. So, I would move approval as presented.
Second.
Okay, questions? Yeah, Lisa?
Under Rule B, if we can use the same wording as we use in 185A2, or change 185A2 to reflect this wording, we could be consistent on that.
Are you talking about B1?
If you look back at Policy 185, A2 refers to what the committee consists of, and I don't know if eligible to apply, member of standing head of committee, except the human, unless the board determines, and, I guess, the part that I'm referring to is the human resource committee portion of the sentence, where at the end of two, it says, "Except for the human resource committee, which is comprised of only board members." If it says, "Except for human resource committee," which is only comprised of board members. It's the last part of the sentence.
So, you wanted to reflect what 185 says?
Either way.
Well, we just approved 185, so how about if we do that?
That's fine, it's just I'm just saying be consistent.
I don't understand, the language is identical.
B2, where are you looking?
This actually says, "Unless the board determines otherwise," is that what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
If you look at 811.4, Rule B.
B1.
One. The last...
Yeah, I see that, but where is it that... I see what you're saying. If you take a look up above, there is a description of the standing committees in 811.4, in the second paragraph up top, and it does have that exact language. So, what we could do is just put a period after the word "committee" and get rid of...
That's fine, it's just, I'm just saying be inconsistent.
Can I suggest that that clause at the end of B1 in Policy 811.4 does not have to do with the HR committee? "Any resident of the district is eligible to apply for appointment as a citizen member of any standing and temporary or ad hoc board committee."
Period.
"Unless the board determines otherwise." That clause has to do with the...
The rest of the...
It doesn't have to do with the HR committee.
It has to do with the "any resident" portion of it.
Then maybe change that, put that, and then "except the resource."
So, is there a better way to word that?
You could eliminate "except human resources," because as you pointed out, it's defined up above already.
Right, right.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. On the back page, under five, and this was just an idea, should preference be... should preference be... Should there be something added that preference would be given to those who want to participate and who have not had the opportunity to do so in the past? It sort of goes with D2, where it talks about the limits of terms. And typically, I know this isn't a problem. We don't have a lot of people that want to be on committees. But in the instance when we do have a lot of community members that want to be on a committee, was there discussion at committee level about, you know... Because we talk about in here that we want broad spectrum of community members if we want to somehow address that issue.
Well, there's already a portion that indicates that committee... That citizen members are eligible for two years.
Right. Under D2.
Right.
No more than two years.
Right. So, the one conversation that we did have, and again, we wound up taking, actually, that's another small portion that we took out, was there was previous language in there saying that the board had the... Could time kind of the term... The terms so that you didn't have all new citizen committee members. So, maybe you'd have one citizen committee member who had been on a year, and then they were in their second year, and you had a new one coming on that was in their first year. But then, we determined it would be better just to leave the policy general and then allow those committee chairs to, you know, to put together their slate. And I think, again, this would allow them the flexibility to definitely do that. So...
Can I suggest a change in wording, which would, I think, reflect the change in tone under D2 to make it more welcoming? So, rather than have D2 state, "No citizen member shall be eligible to serve more than two consecutive full terms on the same standing committee," I think it would be better to say, "Citizen members shall be eligible to serve two consecutive full terms on the same standing committee." And then, the second sentence defines what they need to do if they want to do more.
I think that's better.
Could we actually even just eliminate that first sentence? Because what if we have a situation where, you know, they're the only citizen member who wants to be on that committee? And then, are we going to say, "Well, sorry, you can't be, so we're just going to go without one?" I mean, do we want to have more flexibility where we just, you know, have any citizen member of a standing committee who deserves reappointment shall apply for reappointment?
I think you do have to specify a term, Lisa. A term for how long they can be on standing committees.
Okay. I'm just saying, if no one else applies, then...
They can apply for reappointment.
Well, right. But don't they have to... When I read this, it's two consecutive full terms. So, at the end of their first term, they have to apply again for their second term. And I'm saying, if they want to apply for a third term and no one else applies, why would we not want them to be on the committee?
I think that leads to...
Is there something I'm missing?
Well, they just need to reapply.
They just need to reapply. The other thing, Lisa, to your point of someone, we could put on the form, when we're looking at that form, we could put a question, "Have you served on a committee before?"
I think that is there.
You know?
I agree. So, what am I...
No.
What am I not understanding?
No, I think Lisa's correct. And I think that there is an understanding that citizen members can only serve two terms, period, on a standing committee.
That's what I'm...
And once they've served that second year, they either... Well, they can apply to another committee.
Which they have.
But they could not be on the same committee for a third year.
Right. But what if we... What if they want to be on, and we need them on because no one else wants?
Yeah. We could put a flex... Some kind of flexibility.
So, I'm just wondering, does that need to be in there? I mean, that's where, you know, we could eliminate that and add that preference will be given to, you know, after two-year term has been fulfilled, preference will be given to a new person or something. But I guess, I don't like the idea of saying flat out, "No." But...
I think if that ever happened, you'd be able to bring the exception before the board.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, if they reapplied, could you say, "This is what we've got"?
Well, of course, you could do that with any policy.
Could you put that in there?
Well, you can do that with any policy, though. You can suspend any policy. I just thought, if we're doing the policy, we should address it now, is my comment.
I guess I'm missing something. This is the only place... Because I'm just looking at 185, which is the only other place. This is the only place where it indicates that a citizen member's term is...
Two years?
One year.
One year. There's no other place that that indicates that. So, if you don't have it there, then you don't have any way of knowing what the term is, so...
Well, but the term, the citizen members are appointed each year.
This is number two, not number one. Number one states...
Right. Number one states the term.
Right.
Right. And then, number two simply says that you can serve on two consecutive full terms. And if you want to have reappointment, essentially, for that second term, you need to reapply.
And I'm obviously... I must not be communicating this right.
I think what Lisa's saying is, if they serve the two years in a row, no one else applies, and they want to serve a third year, do we have to put some kind of... Is that... Am I...
No, that's it. Exactly.
That's what she's saying.
Lisa's saying, "Why should you have a limit on the number of years a citizen member can serve?"
This doesn't give a limit.
But it only allows two years.
The first... Number one says "for one year," right? Number two says, "A citizen member shall be eligible to serve two consecutive full terms on the same standing committee." That's two years.
Right.
No more.
It says, "No citizen member..."
I changed... I suggested we change that language.
Oh, okay.
All right? So, I suggested we change the language to, "A citizen member shall be eligible to serve two consecutive full terms on the same standing committee." The next sentence, essentially, is an evergreen clause. The next sentence says, "You can reapply for reappointment every single time."
Yeah. There you go.
Right. But the clean copy doesn't...
That makes some...
Now, I'm looking at the redline copy.
Got it.
So, it actually supports what Lisa said, which is, it just...
We're just not seeing it.
Right.
If it's there, we didn't see it.
Just changing that.
Okay. Then, I would like to make a motion to amend the first motion to eliminate the "Except the Human Resource Committee" on Rule B1, and to change the wording in D2 to what Attila just said. And if you could repeat that, please, for her.
Sure. Do you want me to repeat it?
For her? Yeah, I would. Please.
Eliminate the word "no," add a word "a," the word "a," eliminate "more than," and then, in the second sentence, change the word "any" to "a."
We have a motion and a second for an amendment. Any other questions? Attila just reread what the changes are. Roll call vote on the amendment, please.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Can I just make a quick little comment that I meant to... What you started? Because I just wanted to thank Meg for catching that timing. Because every year, when we vote in the new members, or there's not vote them in, but they get new members, we always say, "Oh, my God, we should push that timing back because they come into a new seating." Some of them, at least one out of the bunch, and they're slapped in the face with the committee, so...
Well, I think it was actually Angel kind of got up there and started... Because we were talking through it. And I think it was a great education for the committee members, especially the citizen members, to just kind of get a sense of, here's... You know, it looks like it's so simple, but it's kind of a complicated process, and it's a really short window. And you don't want to go like we did this year for a couple months, where you don't have a citizen member on the committee because you, you know... So, I think it'll work well.
Well, I mean, it was something that always came up, you know, when that's... That was slapped in their face, and so...
Excellent. Okay. All right. Now, we need to vote on the amended original motion.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Meg?
Now, what everyone was waiting for. We're back to the 600 series once again. But hopefully, this will be the last time we have to entertain these.
And before you start that, Meg, I apologize. But did we get a... I know you have some suggestions here. Did we get a clean copy? I mean, I have my copy from last...
We made no... It didn't go to committee, so it's whatever was...
Right back to the board.
Whatever was in your last board packet, and the committee packet, and the previous board packet, that's exactly what we're looking at tonight.
Did we not ask Lisa to send her changes to you?
She sent them to everybody.
Everybody got them.
Yeah, we got them all. And then, we got her... We got actually a memo that lists all the specific requests from Lisa.
That's the memo here?
Yes.
Okay. Because I got them, and I was looking for the actual breakdown of each one.
Yeah. That's...
I have it, if you want to.
Yeah. There is an actual breakdown of...
It wasn't in the packet, though.
Oh, it was in...
No. It wasn't in...
It wasn't in our packet.
Oh, it was on the...
I went on, got mine.
Okay.
Are we going to do these one by one?
I think we'll do these one by one. So, I...
I can help on some of these, Meg.
Okay.
Tom and I met this afternoon at some length about the 600 series, and each of the individual suggestions that Lisa made. In the very first one, we... And/or board meetings is not a problem. We don't see a problem with that. So, adding that to the end of the... End of the fourth paragraph is fine with us.
Well, and then, my other thought had been, and again, we can do that, but the other thing that we could do is, we could change it so that it reads, "The superintendent or his or her designee shall keep the board informed on the statutes of the budget on a monthly basis," period. So, then, the superintendent and/or his designee, right now, they're currently providing it to the committee. And that's how they're providing it. Now, as Lisa said, if there's a month that the committee isn't meeting, then they would have that ability to provide it directly to the board. So, we would...
I don't disagree, but the problem is, some people are going to... When all of us are no longer around the table, somebody's going to read that literally and say, "The board." And they're not going to see it as the committee.
Okay.
So, that's why we looked at that and said, "Okay, it doesn't matter." And/or board meetings doesn't substantively change it. It provides some flexibility.
So, you prefer that to eliminating to have more flexibility?
Yeah.
I think it's clearer than...
So, I would make a motion to approve 620 with the recommendations of Attila and Tom and Lisa have recommended.
The wording "and board meetings."
The wording.
And.
And/or "or" and slash "or" board meeting.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
623.
We're okay with adding the reference.
So move approval of 623 with the reference to 623.1, Wisconsin statutes added.
Second. Comments, questions? Rule call vote, please.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
623.1.
We're okay with the adding reference 623, and the explanation regarding Lisa's questions are as, as follows. When the board approves the budget, you'll find it in the budget book, the board approves the actual large expenditures by account numbers, not by individual line items. So if there are transfers made between, let's say, the 100 or 1,000 Series, those are done internally. If there are transfers done between the 100 or 1,000 and the 200 or 2,000 Series, that requires board approval before that can happen.
So it's not dollar amount, it's account number?
Correct.
Well, and that's, and that's what I, actually, Lisa, when I was looking through it, because I was, I was, it is a little confusing frankly, but that's why the first portion of, the first sentence refers to within and within, and I believe, Attila, that's what you're referring to. So, so if you're transferring within, they do it. If they're transferring between or to or from, which is in the second sentence, so they're transferring between, then you have to talk to us.
Perfect, got it.
So there's two other things you need to know, is at the end of the year, the board actually approves all of the budget transfers. That is, at the end of the year to put the books to rest, the board does that. The other thing you need to know is that there are internal controls of which you are not aware. So typically, whenever a budget transfer is made, there's some levels of approval that need to be made, and typically those are, are, have to be approved by Tom and to some extent Bill, but I'm usually aware of those as well. So there's conversations that take place internally as controls. Just to, just to let you know that.
Okay, so to.
All we need to do is add that reference.
Yep, I would move approval of 623.1 with the reference to 623, Wisconsin statutes.
Second. Questions, comments? Rule call vote, please.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, 630.
Lisa's correct in her statement, it's not independent of state law, it's a, actually restatement of it, and the reason for that is, is so that it is not hidden from the public. It's not hidden from our citizens such that, and this is one of those cases where you do want to repeat it rather than have just a reference to it, because it's an important statement about the tax and debt limitations that the district has. So it's for disclosure purposes more than it is anything else.
And, and I guess then based on that and my, my further comment about remembering to update this, I'm just curious if we should reword it somehow to not include the percentage and just say, you know, "The district may incur indebtedness for district purposes only in an amount not to exceed the state mandated or the state equalized valuation," so that if there's a change in the law from the 10% and it goes to 11 or 12 or down to 9, then we as a district don't have to remember that we need to go back to this policy.
Well, there, we, Tom and I talked about that as well. There are notifications that are sent to districts.
So you, that reminds you to update your policy? Okay.
And I, you know, I was thinking the same, thinking the same thing today, and I agree with Attila, I think it's, this is an important informational point for the public, and the practical reality is, frankly, it doesn't matter what it says in our policy, because if state law changes, we follow state law.
I know.
Our policy can't do something, so.
Right, but I just like to.
So that one's fine.
Well, move approval of 630 is presented.
Second. Questions or comments? Rule call vote, please.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
So I'm assuming you're going to give me the same reasoning on the next one?
For disclosure. Yeah, especially the $100,000 figure.
Got it. As long as you get a reminder to update it.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll move approval of 631.1 is presented.
Second. Rule call vote?
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
655.
Yeah, we, we talked at some length about, about this one. This would be quite an undertaking to report all of those agreements annually, to compile that data. The, the total revenues from rentals are reported in the budget under local resources, it's under a, the section called local resources, and we just felt that it would be an awful lot of work that, quite frankly, there are, there are more important things to attend to on an annual basis than, than, than that. The board can see how much doll, how many dollars are taken in, because they're all put into that particular fund. It includes other things, granted, but it, it, it just isn't, we rent our facilities out a lot.
And, and I guess that isn't really what I was thinking of when I read this. I was thinking of our, not our facilities, facilities, but our home on North Second and our, you know, our other, our properties. So not like the gymnasium, but the actual rental agreements with, say what?
Property rental agreements?
Yeah, like the, so when I read that, that's what I was thinking of, because there's a turnover in board members, and when a new board member comes, they're not aware of, okay, we rent this facility out, like part of the Fernandez Center, you know, we used to rent it and I'm not sure if we still do out, just so that, that board member is aware that, oh, we do have rental income from there and there. So when I read that, I was not in the mindset that we were talking the gymnasium.
Yeah, it's, it's like the whole thing.
We own two homes. Make sure I got that right. Bill, am I right, two homes?
Exactly.
Two homes. Well, actually, three.
That's why that's what I was thinking, is real estate.
Right, so, so we own three homes for which we, from which we get rental.
And that's, you know, it's a district-owned real estate, so that's where my mindset was.
We have other real estate that we own, but we don't collect any rental from that.
Right, so.
I would think that was something we could.
We do it at the Fernandez Center.
Oh, at the Fernandez Center.
Fernandez Center.
We get some, if it's rented.
Four or five offices, I think.
And don't we get money from you a cellular too?
That's actually.
Cell tower that's back there. That's not a facility technically of ours, but it's on our grounds.
Correct.
What's that?
There's a cell tower back here.
The cell tower.
Right, right.
And, like I said, when I read this, I just thought it would be nice for the new board members to be aware of.
Well, that could be part of the orientation for those board members, to let them know what those properties are, as opposed to reporting the agreements on an annual basis.
So what does timely manner mean then?
It means that if, for example, if there is a change in the amount that we charge, which we did at the Boston School Forest a year or two ago, if there is a change, for example, in the Fernandez Center, we actually lost a renter or two, and we re, well, we converted the basement area to now classroom space for the alternative school and for.
The butcher.
Excuse me?
The shop.
No, not the shop, the telepresence center, oh, I'm, I can't recall exactly, but in any case, so in cases like that is when we report to the board, when there's changes to those contracts.
I think it could be a general discussion.
But we can include it in new board orientation.
Yeah.
Versus this. So I'll move approval of 655 is presented.
Second. Questions or comments? Rule call vote, please.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
664.1.
So number one is athletic fees are incorporated in the very first sentence when it refers to co-curricular activities, so that's an umbrella?
For your time, okay.
Right, that's for all of those. Should emails be added to Rule 6? We could, the word, the phrase such, as such measures as just kind of generally does that, but we can add emails and then, actually, we put telephone calls, letters, comma, emails, now, and then put et cetera. The problem with emails, and this is one reason that Tom and I don't think this is such a great idea, is that emails are subject to open records requests. And what we're talking about here is the collection of fees from families, and.
Well, our, letters are open to, subject.
They are, but it would be highly unlikely that somebody would specifically request letters to the business office from somebody, a parent who's, who is responding to a collection request. But it is more likely that somebody would make an open, open records requests of emails from the Director of Business Services.
So is there really even a reason you, you need to list the measures and not just say, "The principals are expected to make every attempt to collect fees and set up installment payment plans"? I mean, is there a reason we have to list them?
Perfect.
We may go back to Paul Decker. The towers are down.
If I can suggest that the number six read, "The principals are expected to make every attempt to collect fees and arrange installment payment plans as needed."
Yeah.
Okay, anything, you had one other?
Yeah, and then 7A and B, why is A stated because it's covered in B? Okay. So we could delete A because it's covered in B. There's no issue there. What, what we just want you to be aware of is, is that it is highly unlikely that we would take anything to a small claims court, because the cost and time of doing that would far exceed the amount we would ever collect, especially if it's $50, $100, $150, and we typically use a collection agency, which is far more efficient and useful. So we're, we are satisfied to eliminate A. And then number seven simply has two paragraphs to it.
What? Is that?
There's a C on the other side, too.
Oh, I don't have a C.
So.
There's a C?
Yeah. Right here.
A notice of this policy shall be sent to parents along with the schedule.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, then that becomes, yeah, then A and B simply change, sorry.
Yep, is that okay?
Yep. So I'd like to amend the motion to change.
There's no motion.
Oh, sorry.
Nope. Yep, we haven't even gotten the motion.
Okay.
And approve with amendments.
Approve provisions, sir.
I would like to make a motion to approve policy 664.1 with the change on number six to reflect the new statement, "The principals are expected to make every attempt to collect fees and arrange installment payment plans as needed," you got that one already, and the removal of 7A.
Second. Any questions or comments? Rule call vote, please.
We don't have to say A will be, or B will be A and C will be B?
No.
I just thought I'd say it. Just saying it.
Stop trying to complicate things.
Okay, Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, 673.1.
We don't have the lump sum option anymore. That's been discontinued this year.
Okay. So I will move approval of 673.1 is presented.
What about 671.1?
You're on 671.1.
Oh, I'm sorry, 671.1.
Second. Sorry, any discussion? Rule call vote, please.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
673.1.
So this might require a little bit more of a conversation. The, the opinion that Lisa attached from the WSB Legal Services refers to court cases that go as far back as 1901, and some of them are from out of state. For example, there's one from Oregon, there's one from Louisiana. The district practice has been to pay all of its bills on a weekly basis, and there are some really good reasons for that. One is, is that we're paying our bills promptly and on time. Secondly, particularly to our local vendors, and to us, that's really important, because we don't want our local vendors, those who are within our district boundaries, to suffer any loss by a delayed payment. Number three, it enhances the reputation of the district to do that on a weekly basis, and the, any board member can come into the business office on a weekly basis and review the bills prior to us paying them, if he or she so, so wishes. We have been paying bills, approval of bills after the fact for a long time. It's been very successful. There have been, at least from our vantage point, there hasn't been any, any issues with that. But there's another reason, too, that's a monetary benefit to the district, and that is, if we pay the bills weekly, it typically, in the cases where we've been offered discounts, means we can take advantage of those discounts in a timely way. Because sometimes if we have to wait a month, we won't get those discounts, particularly if there's something that comes up that's available that we need to purchase right away. So while the WSB recommends not paying the bills until the board formally approves it, this is a practice that has followed, Bill, in a lot of districts, I mean.
Most, most districts.
I would say 90% of the districts, exactly for the reasons that I described. So we, we don't feel that there's any advantage to changing that. We just think it's good practice for the reasons I noted.
That being said, do we even, do we need this policy, one, and if we do need it, should we really be pointing out as if there are only certain ones we do ahead of time?
I think we do need the payment for disclosure reasons to the public.
Okay.
I wouldn't disagree that under the rule, that the examples, that first sentence could be deleted, because it would be satisfied with the second one, a list of businesses with whom the district arranges early payments will be available in the business office.
Fine. But we don't, I mean, I don't want it to imply that, that we have a list of businesses whom the district arranges, I mean, and maybe I'm reading too much in this, but it almost seems like if we, if we leave the wording like that, like we actually formally did a process, and I don't really think that we formally do an arrangement, I think we just do it, this is our policy.
Well, we could eliminate the paragraph. What's important is the very first paragraph. And the second one, "When significant savings can be accrued, the director shall authorize such payments," those are the two important ones. The third one is nonessential.
Well, but even the second isn't, because then it implies, "When significant savings can be accrued," that's when it happens. I mean.
Except that the first paragraph, the second sentence says, "The board authorizes early payment of these in accordance within the following, with the following rule."
Well, and that's what.
The first paragraph is the rule. The first paragraph is the rule, the third paragraph is simply examples.
Giving examples.
Well, I think what you're saying is, we're only paying the early payments on the ones we're saving money on it, and that's not what you said, we pay the payments early on all of them, not just ones with savings.
Our practice is to always pay them.
Right, so the very first paragraph, it, it doesn't have that limitation. It just says, "In some instances, the board benefits from making payments of individual bills or invoices earlier than that allowed by standard procedures."
Right.
Okay?
Right.
So you could just say, if you'd like, the, well, I, I'm reluctant to alter that, I'm more inclined to eliminate the word "rule" and have a second paragraph of the policy indicating that, indicating exactly what the second paragraph says. So it's not a rule, it becomes part of the policy.
But it implies that that's the only time it happens.
No, because it said he may authorize such payments. He may not.
No, when it says in the rule, Chris, when it says.
Right.
Significant savings can be accrued.
Yeah, but then it says, "The Director of Business Services may authorize such payments to be made according to vendor payment due dates."
But, but actual practices, there's no "may" about it, it's that he always does.
Right, I just wanted to reflect.
Does he always do that, Bill?
All bills are always paid, I mean.
All bills are always paid ahead of time, right?
Bills are paid every Friday. If, if, you know.
Depending on what we have, though.
A good example would be the Skyward bill, we would actually get the bill in April, it's not due till June 30th. They gave us a discount if we paid it by May 1st.
Right.
Now they don't, so now we pay it, we, we took the bill in, in April, we just don't pay it until the end of June now.
Okay, how is this, Lisa? We leave the first sentence, and the second sentence would read, "The board authorizes the Director of Business Services to make such early payments," period.
You could add in the, I, I pulled, Iola Scandinavia has a policy, and the, the language that they have in theirs is, "Such authority shall extend in all cases where such release of checks prior to final approval by the school board would be in the best interests of the district."
Oh, that's good.
Which is what I think they're modeling, the modification to state statute, providing school districts with greater latitude in the best interests of the district. So you could pull that, that language in.
Do you have the language there?
I've, I've got, I mean, it's not the, here, theirs goes on, they go on, they have specific examples, too, but that, I thought that, to me, kind of was the essence of when it occurs.
Right.
Sometimes the best interest is because you make more money. Sometimes it's a local vendor, you have a relationship and you're working with them.
Well, we just do it all the time, so.
So this, you read the second sentence, right?
Yes.
What are you doing, looking at Iola Scandinavia?
I was doing.
What about Wisconsin Rapids?
I was doing research in advance of tonight, so I had information.
Careful, this is on tape, careful. So if we eliminate the second and third paragraph, that is, those two under rule, right? And we keep the first sentence of the first paragraph, and then we, instead of the second sentence, we say, "Such authority shall extend in all cases where such release of checks prior to final approval by the board would be in the best interests of the district."
Slash this. We didn't want that back, Meg.
Nope, I guess it's gone. I can get it, I can find it again.
I bet you can.
Okay, so I will move approval of 673.1 with those changes.
Second. Any other questions?
Who was the second?
Kim.
All right, rule call vote, please.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Ms. Faxon.
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick.
Yes.
Ms. Totten.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
683.
So no, the, it is not online for the public to view. I would venture to guess, in, in our district, and I'm not exaggerating when I say this, we probably have over a million pieces of inventory.
Okay.
Maybe even more. And, and I think that, to try to keep track of that and put that online and change it all, I mean, it's.
So we don't have an asset management plan or?
Well, we have an asset management plan, but we don't have a inventory list that's kept up to date online for the public to view, because things change all of the time. Thank you.
And I don't know if this is a topic, but food for thought is, could we do something like the university does, is have a daily rummage sale?
We can do it right out here in, you're welcome to come out and do it.
Hey, I would probably could lead that, you know, because there is a full-time position at the university that they do that, what their money goes for, I don't know, but food for thought, if it would be worth it.
A garage sale every year for the district?
Well, every Friday from 1:00 to 4:00.
Does the district take items over there?
Yes, that's in the next policy. 690 to the surplus store.
Well, let's move approval of 683.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did we second that one?
No, that's not seconded yet.
I just did, then.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Paxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
And the final one.
Yay.
690.
So number four, why not also send to UWSP surplus? Well, because sometimes it is easier for us to dispose of it in a different way and sell it. And while, I mean, as Kim mentioned before, it requires, I mean, there's some paperwork and some logistics that go into that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
As long as it's easier, that's fine.
And then the last one, number six, is that trade is not the first option for exactly the same reason. And we talked about a couple of examples of that. We can't just give away books. And here's a good reason. Our Title I funds are little over $1 million, and while most of those go for salaries, there is a fairly significant amount of money that's used to purchase material on books. And by federal law, we can't just give those books away, or materials away. We have to go through a procedure to do that. So a trade is not our first option. Another one is computers, that it is easier for us. For example, Cindy Solinsky has a computer, I don't even know what she calls it, she gets a trailer and they have those computers.
Yeah, e-cycle drive.
Yeah, the e-cycle drive. It's a lot simpler for us to do that. So the trade is not the first option. It's only used when other areas are problematic.
Well, and I picked up on the, which was a red flag to me, six references, "Any obsolete equipment which presents a possible liability or a disposal cost problem should be traded in or disposed of." And so from a district perspective, if we've got a piece of property that poses a possible liability to us, or a disposal cost problem, I don't think we want to be trying to sell it to, I mean, anybody else. So I think that's where it's referencing, that it should be traded in or disposed of.
And you're absolutely right, Lisa. Trade, when your statement, a trade is not always the best, it is not our first option, or exactly, because it's cumbersome.
Right. So I would move approval of 690.
Wait, I'm still missing number six. Okay, so if a fee is charged to dispose of anything, then their first option is to do a trade-in?
I think this is just an example. I think we take every situation differently, that is, what it is that we're, what it is that we're dealing with. You have to recall for just a moment that this was adopted in 1975.
But can we get rid of the example, then?
Sure, absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely. Be glad to do that.
Yep.
Because that's reading, if we're going to get a fee, we got to trade it in.
Right.
Yeah, just remove that. Thank you.
You're right. Okay, so move approval of 690 with the amendment to dropping the final sentence in paragraph six.
Second. Roll call vote.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Paxson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Scher?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
And Amy, can we have the suggestions or the comments that I sent out put into this packet? Apparently, it was, some people got it on their drop box so that the public could know what we were going through.
I think it was with the human, or no, the policy committee packet, but not with the...
It was with the polit...
Okay.
Well, no, it's not, no, it wasn't, because it didn't go to policy.
No, it actually came out...
Because I was asked to send it to you to get it to everyone, but then I thought it was going to be in the...
And then I emailed it to everyone.
Right, but it could please be put in the packet so that the public could see why we...
It was in the paper packet, the packets that, because I came...
It wasn't in mine, I get a paper packet.
When I came on Friday and picked one up, that, I got it.
You got that, but you didn't, no, you didn't.
Everything had the same stack. They all came out of the same stack, so...
I am...
No, you don't have it, you have the memo.
I'll take responsibility for this. When we received Lisa's comments, I took those and put them in the memo. It did not occur to me that we needed to include what Lisa had sent, and I just made the assumption that the memo, which was quoted with what Lisa had sent, would be sufficient. So that the fact that it was not included in the board packet is my responsibility. It wasn't done for any other reason other than to avoid having to duplicate another set of papers. That's all.
And I'm just saying, I would like the public to be able to access this online, to see what we have.
Well, and from a policy and legislative committee perspective, it would be extremely helpful to our committee because policies are a little bit different breed in that you're looking at specific language, or you're looking at specific words. And to the extent that board members who cannot be at our meeting, if you could do what Lisa did today, I mean, provide in advance to the committee, ask, you know, questions or concerns or suggestions, that would help the committee to try to get those incorporated prior to the time they come to board, and therefore might decrease what we would have to talk about at the board level. So I would greatly appreciate it if people would be able to do that. I know that, I know there are a number of you that just can't make Tuesday meetings.
All set, Meg?
Yep.
Thank you very much. All right, we're on to general. Under general is board listening sessions. The first one is this Wednesday, the 14th, from 7:00 to 8:00. I asked Alex to please pick the topics, and he is going to kind of direct the conversation as these were originally his idea. There are a couple of legal issues that we need to discuss, and it has to do with the posting. And the simplest way to resolve this without changing how it's posted, so we are not allowed to have a discussion about this, because that's conducting board business. We can't do that. And it's hard because, Attila, stay in the loop, because you're the other one on the So handing out, for instance, establishing new district goals. If we handed out the current district goals, that is considered discussing them. We are being an active participant in the discussion, so we cannot do that. So we can't give handouts or anything like that. If people come with ideas, we can talk about it. Primarily, though, we genuinely need to listen. I mean, if people come with ideas, it's posted what we'd like to talk about, they can tell us, and we need to hear them out. It's so touchy with how it's posted and what kind of information goes out that it does not become a mini board meeting. So that's kind of where I am. I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, Alex?
No, that sums it up. I think the biggest thing that we might benefit from directly is hearing about grade realignment, the public's view on it. That can help give us some perspective on which way we want to go as a board.
Legal counsel advised relative to what Angel said and Alex, which you just referenced, that if the board, or a board member, at that meeting distributes any information about a particular item, you're essentially saying that that's the topic for discussion, but it wasn't noticed on the agenda, and you immediately have a problem. So if you want to talk about grade realignment, the thing to do is to allow the people coming to the listening session bring that up. You're there as a board to listen, but if you actively engage in a discussion and you propose an item, you've essentially began a discussion at the board level without having posted it on the agenda. And so the public didn't know that that's what you were going to talk about. Whereas a listening session, the way it's currently posted, it's wide open for you as a board to listen, to get feedback. You can ask clarifying questions, as if, "I don't understand what you mean," but you can't interact with that individual because you're then beginning to have a discussion, essentially, especially if there's five members of the board there, and you're conducting, as Angel pointed out, a mini board meeting, without it having been noticed.
So are you, are you saying, for example, very first item, establishing new district goals, we can't even mention...
There is no item on the agenda.
Okay.
It just says, "Listening sessions," if I read correctly, right?
Correct.
And that's the suggested way to do it. If we put an item on there, it...
We're opening ourselves up for anyone from the public to come to this listening session and say whatever they want to say?
And talk to us about any issue they have.
And so why did we not make this an agenda? Because it ends up being a little mini board meeting?
Bingo.
Okay.
Right. And, and by statute, if there are five members of the board there, they could act, even if it doesn't say "action."
Posting doesn't have the selected topics on it.
No.
That's correct.
Just says, "A listening session."
Got it.
So, that said, members of the public, you can come, 7:00 to 8:00, Wednesday, January 14th, to the pinerie room, and talk to us about anything you'd like to talk to us about. If you have something that's been on your mind, something you've been thinking about, please bring it.
And can I raise a question for clarification? So if an individual board member decided, kind of like Alex, you've done a couple times, if an individual board member decided, like Julie Lassa does, and Katrina Shaklin does, and the other legislators do, to have a listening session, as an individual board member, he would have the ability to put down specific topics of what he wanted to get input on, and there wouldn't be...
So would four members of the board, as long as they were not the same four members who serve on a committee.
It's the risk of that this was opened to all, five or more of us showing up.
So I guess I go back to the question, because I looked at our, I looked at our last, I mean, I went and I looked back, and back in October, we approved having board listening sessions. And then in, I think it was November, we had a long discussion about the listening sessions because we were going to come to agreement as a board as to how we were going to handle them, and, you know, how we were going to conduct them, and what we were going to do. And we took no action on anything. I mean, we came up with no guidelines whatsoever of what we're doing. So my question is, if we're really looking at achieving what I think, Alex, your original purpose was, which was to be able to get input from the public on items that, you know, that we wanted at least to have, or that you wanted to have direction for, would we not be better just holding individual listening sessions, rather than...
Well, the point of that...
Because we've got an attorney who's clearly telling us that there's, that this is frankly fraught with peril, and that we, and that we, as a board, have no ability other than to say, "We're going to be in a room." I mean, we don't have the ability to gather input on maybe specific items that we, as a board as a whole, would feel would be beneficial to us in doing our work moving forward.
The point of the whole board being involved is so that one individual just does not hold something and bring it to the board, saying on behalf of the public that attended that gathering, whatever the topic was. It's so that everyone in the board can hear it at one time, so that there's no speculation, there's no, someone just saying something, and actually, there really wasn't anyone who attended a meeting. We don't want anything like that. So the transparency of all the board members attending, or whoever's possible, or whoever's able, there's less likelihood of anything happening that isn't witnessed by another individual.
So will we, as a district, be videotaping these?
I guess that's a decision of the district, of the board.
We've not made arrangements for that. If I can just turn back the clock for a moment. When Alex first brought up the issue, and it was discussed at the board, I was charged with putting out together a framework. And I asked the board members each to contact me and let me know what they saw as the framework. No one contacted me, except Alex, who sent me what he originally proposed to the board. I took that, talked with legal counsel, and I did develop a framework, and that's in a memo. And it was a pretty clear framework outlining what the, in fact, I believe I may have used the exact words about, "Legal counsel indicated that this idea was fraught with peril. However, if you're going to move forward, here's what you need to do." And I developed that in an outline form. At either that meeting or a subsequent meeting, there was a conversation that the board had about how to move forward. And I don't know whose idea it was, I don't know if it was mine or one of yours, I don't know. But a suggestion for you is, if you want to hold board meeting, excuse me, board listening sessions, and you want to avoid what you just said, Alex, it would be to schedule them on a regular basis. So let's say you could do it every month, at the same, let's say, the same Tuesday, in the pinerie room at the same time. You could do it every other month, on the Tuesday, at the same time in the pinerie room. And then make sure that no more than four board members attend. And people sign up for which ones they want to, or they can go to, but no more than four. And you could then schedule those for 12 months in advance, and you would have absolutely no problem at all, as long as four members were not the same people who sat on the same committee. You could do that. You could do that in advance, and you would avoid, then, the minefield that you talked about.
Would those conversations be back and forth with the...
Absolutely. It's just board members, not a quorum, not members of the same committee who had interactions with the community. You could do that.
And you can have a suggested agenda item, because it's not a board?
Well, it's a listening session, it's not a board meeting that you would have to notice.
Right.
You would just, it's a listening session.
And you could also have a board listening session with everyone there and a quorum, if you didn't, if you just listened.
Right.
Which is where it is scheduled now, for Wednesday.
Just listened, no interaction.
So you could go either way.
Because we've had that before in the district.
It's really up to what you want to do.
Right.
What do you think more meshes with what your original vision was?
It would be the four individuals, I think, as far as there being, not a limitation of some of the interaction. But I think we'll see how this first one goes, and then the board can decide how they'd like to hold it from that point forward.
Can we take this informal poll as to who might be attending? Because I'm planning on, or I'm trying to attend. I got something else that I have to do, but I'm going to try to be there, because I think it's a great idea.
Okay, can we, is that all right? So, yes, were you going to attend?
I'm going to try, but it'll be my third board meeting, or something with the third, with the board this week.
Okay.
And I'm going to try, I'll be in Oliva, but I'm hoping to be back any time, so...
Kim, I got a class.
Meg?
I'm assuming I'll be there. That's Wednesday.
Wednesday, 7:00 to 8:00. Chris?
No, I won't be there.
Okay. And you were maybe, I'm scheduled to work until 7:00, so the earliest I'd be there is 7:15. But was, but will...
I'll be there. Ask me.
So sorry.
One comment, well, actually, two. One is, I'm not sure how this will start, but I think we have to be very clear. Now, if, I'm counting now, it seems like six.
Oh, yeah, that is six. Well, and I, I don't have to, I mean, I'm more than happy if there are four that want to be at the one on Wednesday, I'm more than happy not to be there, because Kim and I have negotiated.
It's noted as a meeting.
This is already noticed.
Noted as a meeting.
Oh, so we can.
Yeah, but somebody has to start it officially, be a board meeting, roll call, and then somebody has to then call for a motion to adjourn.
And there's, and this is one where there's nothing, then there's nothing that can be on the agenda, there can, there's nothing that can be handed out.
You're sitting there listening, and you can ask clarifying questions.
Okay, Amy's going, so she can do the technical pieces.
I can do the technical parts of it, since I'm not a member, I would be the presiding non-member.
Okay.
Does that work?
Sure thing.
Everyone okay?
Yeah, and you'll make sure no, no conversation goes on.
I'm taking the gavel.
Reminder.
Good. Girl. I may not show up, Amy.
No kidding, anybody.
Do we get workers comp?
I got something else that I have to do, but I'm going to try to be there, because I think it's a great idea.
Okay, can we, is that all right? So, yes, were you going to attend?
I'm going to try, but it'll be my third board meeting, or something with the third, with the board this week.
Okay.
And I'm going to try, I'll be in Oliva, but I'm hoping to be back any time, so...
Cam, I got to class.
Meg?
I'm assuming I'll be there. That's Wednesday.
Wednesday, 7 to 8. Chris?
No, I won't be there.
Okay. And you were maybe, I'm scheduled to work until 7, so the earliest I'd be there is 7:15, but was, but will...
I'll be there. Ask me.
So sorry.
One comment, well, actually, two. One is, I'm not sure how this will start, but I think we have to be very clear. Now, if, I'm counting now, it seems like six.
Oh, yeah, that is six. Well, and I, I don't have to, I mean, I'm more than happy if there are four that